We got everyone, so I'm gonna call to order the Monday, March 8th, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're gonna begin with a roll call. I'll start. Mayor Mike Fournier here, zooming in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Mr. Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak, Oakland County, Michigan.
Commissioner Prush?
Here in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Dubach?
I am here in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Collo?
I'm here in my child's bedroom in Royal Oak, Michigan.
All right. No green room this, this time.
Little crazy in the house.
Understand, understand. All right, well, we're going to begin with a invocation, invocation given by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll hand it over to Commissioner Dubach to hear his invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, today is International Women's Day, um, the day when we celebrate, the world celebrates and takes time to, to recognize the social and economic, cultural and political achievements of women. From Mabel Baldwin, Royal Oaks' first elected female city commissioner in 1923, to the amazingly talented colleagues I have the honor of serving with here today, Commissioner Prush, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Hunt, and Commissioner Macy, to celebrating the first woman to serve as Vice President in the history of our nation, Kamala Harris. So today, uh, we recognize this and more. But in addition to that, it's time to raise awareness, uh, and to demand action toward gender parity. In this last year, as we struggle with the pandemic, all manner of inequity and injustice has now even been put on display, but exacerbated. And women, in particular, have been disproportionately impacted, uh, in many ways, including job loss and wage reduction, rolling back some of the gains that have been so hard-won over generations of organizing and activism for justice. Meanwhile, women have carried a disproportionate, uh, part of the burden of seeing our communities through this struggle, making up a disproportionate number of nurses and teachers and caregivers, both professional and at home. So today in Royal Oak, let's recognize that the struggle for equity continues and that we all have a part to play. Now, the scene, the theme of this year's International Women's Day is Choose Challenge, and I think it's a message that resonates in everything that we do and should aspire to do at this table. So I'll close with a statement from the Women's Day materials, which is, "A challenged world is an alert world. Individually, we are all responsible for our own thoughts and actions, all day, every day. We can all choose to challenge and call out gender bias and inequality. We can all choose to seek out and celebrate women's achievements. Collectively, we can all help create an inclusive world. From challenge comes change, so let's all choose to challenge."
Thank you, Commissioner Dubach. Now's the time for our Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Commissioner Dubach to lead us through it. I ask you to stand if you can.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this brings us to item five, which is a legislative update from State Representative Ellison. Mr. Ellison, uh, thank you for joining us here tonight, and, uh, we're grateful that you could make time to make us aware of what's going on in Lansing, and I'll turn over the floor to you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Fournier. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here, especially on such a momentous day as this. And having, having been out there for many years myself, and I remember when we started turning over and bringing our, our, our very talented women into our government fold, and the city has improved dramatically because of it, so, you know, I'll stand back and let you guys do the work. It's kind of great. Um, try to do, I know you guys have a big agenda, we'll try to wrap this up, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, legislatively, uh, we've been concentrating on COVID, uh, COVID issues, and, yeah, vaccine distribution, uh, money distribution, and it's turned into a, unfortunately, it's turned into a partisan fight. Uh, we did last week, we did pass budget supplements, um, giving, doling out the money that we got from the federal government, $2.3 billion with, um, money going to the Health and Human Services, 632 meters, it's all kinds of dollars. The problem with this bill, and you should know, I voted no, there's three bills I voted no on all of them. Not because I don't want to get the money into the hands of the people that need it, but because the Republicans have tie-bared this into a policy bill that would force the governor to sign over, uh, her executive powers, as well as Department of Health and Human Services, take power away from them, so they couldn't, you know, in a health situation like we're in right now, their, their, their ability, excuse me, their ability to control that situation would be extremely hampered. And so the odds are that the governor is probably gonna veto all of this, and it's still gonna get us back to square one. We've got federal money sitting out there that is ready for us to use, and we've gotta get it dispersed. So those battles continue. Unfortunately, um, some people can't see beyond their partisan faces to, uh, to try to make some things happen, but we continue to fight the fight as best we can. We've got good people, uh, working in appropriations to try to get the money out, but, but that's really kind of what we're doing. There's very little other legislation, excuse me, going on. But, um, you know, the bills I'm talking about are the ones to give money back into schools. One of the caveats on the school bill is there is some extra money available, but you had to, uh, have 20 hours of special training, uh, by the 22nd of March to make it happen. And it just wasn't gonna happen. It's unreasonable. They set it up to fail. So there's crazy things like that happening, and we tried to stay on top of it and, and try to negotiate away, but, uh, I still remain optimistic that we're gonna get something done. I mean, we've gotta have a budget, we've gotta get money in there, we've gotta take care of this, so. Um, you, as you're probably all aware, there have been updates in the, uh, the COVID, uh, constrictions, um, from both, uh, federal and the, uh, and the state. Today was first day of, of changing in the, in the age bracket of who can get the vaccine. Uh, Friday, we opened up the bars and restaurants a little bit more and changed some of the capacities. So slowly but surely, we're getting this thing back to normal. I, I appreciate the fact that we're taking our time on it, and we're not rushing into it, because the worst thing that could happen to us as we go into our summer is to have a recurrence and another, uh, growth in, in numbers. So, um, I think we're, we're doing it correctly and, uh, trying to keep on top of it. Along that same line, because of the COVID, we've had a tremendous amount of problems with unemployment insurance. And they are just, they're just overwhelmed. They, they were never designed to handle the amount of claims that they've been handling for the last year. So from that point, uh, my office is available. Uh, my, my constituent specialist, Madeline Abernathy, has become a real pro at cutting through that red tape at, um, at UIA. So I invite anybody, if you, anybody that looks, lives in either Royal Oak or Madison Heights, um, if they have a problem with the UIA, if they've lost their contact person, reach out to my office at, uh, jimallison dot, uh, where's my, jimallison, at house dot m i dot G L B, or call the office at 517-373-3818. And, uh, Madeline will, will get your message and then reach out to you, try to take care of that. Uh, as far as personal goals I've got going, um, I am, my, this is, this is my year to concentrate on municipal finance. I think I've talked to most of you about the plans we've got, I've been doing for the past two years anyways, working on getting support from my Republican colleagues, um, trying to get them to understand that we need to change the system of how we, how we find as our municipal governments. And, uh, to that end, um, I've got a bill that I dropped last year, died because of non-action, and I haven't introduced it yet this year because I do want to refine it. But it's a bill that would basically restore the heavily roll-up provision. The heavily had, when it was first voted in 1978, heavily, the heavy amendment, uh, forced the government to roll down your military rate when the economy was good, and it also allowed you to roll it up when the economy was bad. And with the passage of Prop A back in the mid-'90s, the roll-up provision disappeared, whether it was by design or inadvertently, but it's not there. So what heavily forces you to do is to roll your tax rate down, and then Prop A forces you to roll your assessments down, and they can't come back up. You all are aware of this, except by, uh, the rate of inflation or, or 5%, whichever's less. Rate of inflation is like 1.8 something, so, um, it, it's impossible to cover back. And restoring the roll-up provision will help, um, when you get into depressed economy. There are other things that need to happen to both of those bills. I am a member of the Legislative Municipal Caucus, uh, that's, that's being formed with, actually, I'm Vice Chair, a Democrat Vice Chair out of that caucus, uh, with our goal, working with the M L to come up with solutions to help cities and counties and, and townships, um, survive. Because we all know that we're gonna be coming out of this pandemic, and there's another crash coming in the economy, so. So we're working on that as best we can. I also formed, since we have a majority of Democrats in the, uh, Oakland County, uh, government now, we formed a, a, uh, House Legislative Democratic Caucus, uh, for House Representatives and, and Senators from Oakland County. And, uh, we are strategizing on how we can offer our talents to do, um, a better job for the county, since we have our Republican colleagues as Executive and, and Chairman of the Board, so that we can try to coordinate, so we can have some, some good things happen. It's an opportunity that's presented itself for the first time, so we're gonna try to move with it. I think what else I got here? Oh, yes, um. I introduced a bill, the first bill I introduced this year was a, uh, a bill that we introduced last year that, that got stalled as a direct result of the, uh, the spill we had in Madison Heights with the green ooze on Expressway. And what my bill does, in, in combination with bills from some of my other colleagues, is that, um, it's the polluter pay law, it's restoring the polluter pay laws that were, that were killed by Governor Engler a number of years ago. So that would end the statute of limit, my particular bill would end the statute of limitations, so, um, as long as that property is there and still polluted, we can still go after the owner for remediation. So that's what that bill would do, is restore the ability to do that. And just last Friday, we dropped a bill concentrating on, uh, stringent, more stringent rules for elder abuse. Um, I, my, my bill in particular sets punishments for anybody who tries to con an elderly person out of their money. It establishes stronger, um, stronger penalties. So again, we're just trying to boost that up, so anybody who's got, uh, elderly parents or, or elderly friends, and you're worried about people taking advantage, we're looking at those, that's a, that's a, I think it's like a 10 or 11 bill package that tries to go after all those issues. But, but again, my focus is, is, most of you know, my focus has always been municipal government. That's where I went up the last thing for, to try to fix this. I'm hoping to do this in my last term. And, uh, try, try to make life better for you, because I lived with that problem for 13 years as your mayor, and, uh, it still hasn't gone away, and we still got a problem. So, uh, we're doing our best to try to make life easier for you and life easier for the residents of the city of Royal Oak and, and, uh, best we can, so. If anybody's got any questions?
Thank you, Representative Ellison. Uh, looks like Commissioner Douglas has a question.
Actually, not a question. I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Representative Ellison on being the Michigan Municipal League's Legislator of the Year.
Thank you very much. It's, it's a great honor. Uh, it's, it's citing my work with the M L on municipal finance issues. They've, I've become their cheerleaders. That's good. I'll take it. I'm very, very proud of the honor, but thank you. Anybody else?
No? All right. Well, I think that was a pretty comprehensive, uh, update, and we appreciate the municipal experience. I mean, we're pretty fortunate to have you, uh, as our representative, um, you know, fighting in Lansing for, um, you know, ensuring that cities remain healthy, because we do deliver some of the most critical and core services that people, you know, take for granted every day. And, um, I know you know this inside and out, and you've lived it for a long time, and you bring a lot of sensibility, uh, and, and, um, and history and experience to the table, so, you know, anything you can do as, as city officials, let us know, Representative.
Yeah, and, uh, good, good government is nothing more than common sense, and you've gotta be able to apply it correctly. One thing that just did occur to me, I had a meeting this morning with the representatives from Oakland County Community College, discussing the capitalities for them, and I verified that we're still on board with the expansion of the Royal Oak campus. And what they told me today is that it is ready to go, it is funded, they don't need to get any more money for it. They're breaking the project up into five different groups. The entire building is gonna be touched. Entire building is gonna be renovated, not just the addition or the, uh, culinary arts program, culinary arts program. So, uh, that was exciting, and, and, uh, there and there was, they, they love their city of Royal Oak, Royal Oak has worked well with them, and, and, uh, so. I'm trying to stay on top of that one. I'm not gonna let that one slip away from us. My biggest victory in that was getting them to get rid of that boiler house that fronts on Main Street, it looks like. So, in their plans, they have moved the boiler house. Anyways, okay, anybody else who thought, I'll just gotta back out and gotta pay attention to what you guys are doing here.
All right. Well, thank you, Jim. Thank you to you and your staff, and, uh, thanks for making time tonight to be with us.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to see everybody.
Same here. Good to see you, Jim. All right, that brings us to item six on tonight's agenda. Ms. Schwanger, uh, public comment.
Allison and members of the city commission. We have 46 public comments to listen to. I advise you to turn the volume up on your individual computers for the best, uh, quality. I will proceed to the messages now.
Hi there, my name is Adam Zupke. I wanted to let you know I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project and hope that it comes to life. Thanks. Hi there, my name is Adam Zupke.
Hi, my name is Marina Chupak. I'm a business owner in the city of Royal Oak, and I just want to show some support for the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, Skateboard Park Project. We need a skate park in the city, so please make it happen. Thank you.
This is John Gilpin. I work at People Skate and Snowboard, and I support the Royal Oak Skateboard Park Project. Get those kids out of the house and get them doing something fun. Thank you.
Hello, City Commission. It's me again, Jordan Zupke, AKA The Skateboard Lawyer. As you probably know, I'm spearheading the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, which has received an overflow of support from those in our community and in the surrounding areas. Please like the Facebook page, Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Royal Oak deserves a world-class skate park. Residents should not have to drive to neighboring cities to use their parks. We have the resources and public park space, public park space necessary to accommodate this project. The ramps currently at Memorial Park are deteriorating and unsafe. I am happy to help any official write a grant, obtain bids, or be a voice for the skateboard community, many of whom I know. I have the resources necessary to make this project seamless. The Tony Hawk Foundation is giving away money, a matching grant opportunity that we can use. As some of you remember, one of the, uh, liaisons for the Tony Hawk Foundation, now The Skate Park Project, was present and gave some very useful insight at one of the previous meetings. Please support this project. If you have any questions or would like to discuss this in more detail, my information can be found at the Royal Oak Skate Park Project Facebook page or at skateboardlawyer.com. Thank you.
Hey, good to meet you. 1021 South Washington Avenue, Unit K. I am calling in regards to new development located at 1003 South Washington Avenue, and would like to suggest that garage entrance be put on the Hudson Street versus Washington Street. As our understanding is the entrance in and out of the new building will have elevator to get the cars in and out of the street or parking and, um, to avoid traffic. And during winter, when the snow is plowed in the middle of the street and you are not allowed to make a left turn, it would make, uh, good business sense if that building, which is being constructed at 1003 South Washington Avenue, have entrance into the garage off of Hudson Street versus Washington Street. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ben. I'm Assistant here in Royal Oak. Um, and I just wanted to voice my support for the Royal Oak Skate Project. It can be definitely a great thing for the community. Me, growing up in the skate community, um, there's a lot of good, good things going on in that kind of community with, uh, a lot of, a lot of great people involved. So I think a skate park in the city would, uh, do a lot for the city and, uh, um, just bring a good community and, uh, support a good community that's already very present in the city. So, once again, just wanted to voice my opinion on, uh, the Royal Oak Skate Project. Thank you.
My name is John Williams. I am the Adjutant, the Assistant to the Commander of Royal Oak American Legion Frank Winland Post Number 253. I am calling not as an individual, but as a representative of 400 post members, 75 auxiliary members, and 100 members of the Sons of the American Legion. I requested the, the official city minutes reflects that I speak for many and not as an individual. The veterans that I represent take issue with the fact that the city did not see fit to consider them as key stakeholders in the discussion and design of the park, and as such excluded them from any meaningful input that most likely would have prevented me from having to call today. This is evident when you did not include even one veteran representative from the many local veteran organizations in Royal Oak on the Downtown Park Task Force. You did not invite a representative from any of the local veteran organizations to the two stakeholder meetings held early on, nor make any attempt to engage the leadership of our veteran organizations to ensure that we were made aware of the meetings, community engagement sessions, or provide us the link to the online survey that we would have gladly emailed out to our membership and encouraged them to take. Imagine what your results would have looked like had you done that. I feel confident that the answer to the question about moving the memorial would have been much different, not to mention that the Downtown Park Task Force would have gotten the opportunity to understand and see the value that the current memorial provides to veterans and those that visit it. Moving it should be out of the question, as it is already in a perfect spot that provides a quiet space for reflection and utilizes the surrounding features and current design to protect it from damage and provide ceremonial space for large crowds. Where you are proposing to move it does not afford it any of those things. In fact, it places the memorial into the same position it was before it was moved the last time, close to foot traffic and car and truck noise, susceptible to heaving due to frost and damage due to skateboarders, and reduces its area to allow for only small ceremonies without the ability to accommodate the 1,000-plus crowd of years past. It is a flagrant omission for you to have excluded veterans from discussions and design input in surrounding the new park design. Do the right thing and keep our memorial and its surrounding green space intact. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Hello, my name is Richard George, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project.
Hello, my name is Arjun Dupati. I am the owner of Unit A at 1021 South Washington Avenue, uh, the Washington condominium. Um, I wanted to leave a message today requesting that the new building at 1003 South Washington Avenue, uh, I'd like to put in the request that the garage entrance be put on Hudson Street. That would be a fantastic thing for us from, uh, a point of view of congestion and also from noise. Um, this would be much appreciated. Uh, thank you so much. Bye.
I'm calling to offer my support and for the Royal Oak Skate Park. It's a fabulous, fabulous outlet for kids and adults and young adults, and I see how much activity other local skate parks get that I attend with my children. Um, it's a fabulous, fabulous setting. The kids really interact. I see how wonderfully, um, supportive the older generous towards these little children that are taking up the sport. I am 100% in favor. I would love to have something local. Go Royal Oak Skate Park. I'm calling to...
Patrick Galloway. I'm calling to leave a comment in regards to the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, and my comment is that I support the Royal Oak Skateboard Park Project. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Kristen Hoffer, um, and I just wanna let you know, I totally 100% for the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Uh, I'm a lifelong skateboarder, and my connection with skateboarding has literally changed my life, um, you know, from a physical perspective, being able to get out and get healthy every day, um, and, and do something that I'm super passionate about while doing it. Um, but it's also pushed me and it's shown me so much about life, um, as, you know, I've grown as a skater and, you know, gotten better over the years. Um, and I just, I, I think the opportunity for kids to have that growing up is so vital, because for me, it changed me as a human. I mean, if I didn't have a skate park growing up, I, I wouldn't be where I am today. Um, and I really wanna make sure that everyone is able to get that opportunity. So, um, whatever we can do to make the Royal Oak Skate Park Project come to fruition, I am in 100% support of it. I think it would be an incredible thing for our community here. Thanks so much for your time, and I hope you have a beautiful day.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Cormier, and I approve for the skate park of Royal Oak. Thank you, bye.
Hello, my name is Rachel Goutman, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I think it would be a great asset to our community. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Lewis, and I live at 1009 South Washington Avenue. I'm calling about the proposal for the new apartment building at 1003 South Washington Avenue, Agenda Item Number 10. At the City Planning Commission meeting in December, I watched as the new owners of the building site were talking about the new plans. Besides it now being taller than the previous builder's plans, I am more concerned about their parking garage entrance that they want to build on South Washington Avenue. The garage includes an elevator to bring cars up and down, which takes a few minutes to operate. So depending on traffic flow in and out of the garage, cars may be backed up on Washington, waiting to get in and out of the garage, similar to the backup problem at the Starbucks on Woodward. When it snows, plowing creates a snowbank on Washington Avenue, so all traffic can only make a right turn. This snowbank is often not removed for days at a time. I'm requesting that the council ask the developer to move the garage entrance to Hudson Avenue, so that during these snow events, traffic can at least pass the cars going in and out of the garage. If the entrance remains on Washington, passing traffic will be brought to a standstill while cars go up and down the garage elevator. Thank you for this. Have a great night.
My name is Dante, and I want to support the local skate park in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Klotz. I am the Post Judge Advocate at the Acorn Post, VFW 1669 here in Royal Oak. And I'm calling tonight not as an individual, but as a representative of over 600 posts and auxiliary members, which I would like to reflect in the meeting, in the minute, I should say. The reason for this call is to request that you follow city ordinance and, and require a public vote to approve moving the memorial. If there was future development of the land it sits on and the surrounding area. It is noted in the ordinance that over 90% of the Royal Oak voters approved the move in 2007. And it does not allow you to move the memorial based on a small majority of you elected officials. small majority of you elected officials and their political appointees, some of whom also political donors of said elected officials. In fact, the very intent of this ordinance was to prevent the travesty of democracy that you have done by circumventing the ordinance. I ask you to comply with the intentions of the residents here in Royal Oak that raise funds to move the memorial to its location, that all veterans and those who visit the quiet space for reflection and utilizes the surrounding features, a current design to protect it from damage and pr- and provide ceremonial space for large crowds. These things that make our memorial special would be removed if plans that you have approved to carry out. You are not improving the memorial, you are ruining it. Had you made a, a little effort to contact us veterans organizations in, in your decision-making, the design process, you have, uh, you would have known this. Do the right thing, keep the memorial as it is, or actually the memorial should be the centerpiece of the park, and it could be Memorial Park or Veterans Memorial Park. Okay? And, uh, consider this in your min- minutes. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Cameron Carmichael. I've been a resident of Royal Oak for about six years now, and been a skateboarder for twenty years. Um, skateboarding really helps communities. Uh, I mean, kids need a place to go and just have something that they're focused on rather than like some weird techy, uh, never mind. Uh, skateboarding helps. Please make a better skate park in Royal Oak.
Hi, my name is Alexander King. Um, I live in Royal Oak, and, um, I'm calling today to make a comment about the, the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Um, I personally have skated the Memorial Skate Park, um, at Thirteen and Coolidge, basically since I moved here. Um, I love that park, but, you know, it's kinda starting to fall away to the wayside. Um, you know, so when I heard about this project, I was really excited because it'd be nice to have a park local that we could go to, um, without getting bogged down by all the kiddos at Burndale Park. Um, you know, that, or even allowing us to maybe build some stuff or bring some equipment over to the one at Thirteen and Coolidge would also be good. Um, something along those lines, but, uh, yeah, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Clark. Um, I would like, I'm calling to, uh, express my support for a public skate par- a new public skate park in Royal Oak. Um, I, I think that skateboarding, uh, is a great exercise for kids, and, uh, given how, uh, impactful COVID has been and, and our new understanding of how important being outside is and having activities that are safe, uh, and to do and to not transmit disease to each other, um, I think that, uh, a skateboard park would be absolutely in line with, uh, with Royal Oak's vision, and, uh, I would very much like to see, um, a world-class skate park that is, uh, reflective of the wonderful park system that Royal Oak has. Um, and I, I know as a skateboarder that it will, uh, drive traffic from, uh, out of town or out of city, uh, to, to use restaurants, and, uh, it's well-planned. Uh, it can be a huge advantage to the, the local businesses as well as, you know, the athletic community in the city. So, I'm calling you, uh, just to express my support for building a skateboard park in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Hello, this is Scott Higginbottom from Farmington Hills. I one hundred percent support the Royal Oak Skate Park. I think it would, um, give the users something to do. It would bring people, uh, from around Farmington Hills where I am. I'd be out there, and then I'd be downtown Royal Oak eating lunch after, you know? So, I think it would be great for your economy, and it would be great for, you know, just activities, something to do. Um, yeah, so one hundred percent support it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey Heisinga, and I support the Royal Oak Skateboard Project. My phone number is six one six three eight nine nine seven six one. Thank you.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, four zero four Mount Vernon Boulevard. I speak as I have for the past few commission meetings on the Centennial Commons Park, previously known as the Downtown Park. My previous comments may not have made it clear that I'm enthusiastic about having a park replace the City Hall Police Station and Small Surface Parking Lot, but it should be a quiet green pocket park with few hardscape amenities. Leave those for other parks. Give people who are working in or visiting downtown Royal Oak a place of respite from the concrete. We have plenty of other parks in the city for children to play. Norman the Oaks is going to have a splash pad. Why add hardscape for one here? The Star Dream Fountain is already a serene water feature. Keep using the Farmers Market Area for vendors, food trucks, and antique and collectibles events. The design moves the Veterans War Memorial, a move prohibited by Royal Oak's Ordinance Number One Fifty Six, and apparently eliminates the green space encompassing the monument structures. The community engagement process is also high- highly suspect for justifying park design. Fact-checking it reveals a lack of balance and objectivity. Who were the fifteen hundred people who participated? Were there duplicates? Were they representative of the entire committee? The DDA figures, I think, inappropriately a large portion of that input. It also shows no attempt to suggest to pa- participants the actual size and scale of the Downtown Park area. The example parks in the Look and Feel Visual Preferences part of the study show primarily large parks that were not at all comparable to this two-acre space. The community engagement process needs a lot more fact-checking, but it clearly is not an appropriate objective guide to the park planning. Continuing my fact-checking, I found serious inaccuracies about money spent to relocate the Veterans War Memorial in the recently posted History of the Veterans Memorial on ROMI, which, by the way, is legally the Veterans War Memorial, per Ordinance One Fifty Six. Apparently figures are taken from DDA minutes, not from actual city or Acorn Foundation income and expenditure records. One significant example, citizen contribution is listed at twenty-five thousand, but a city spreadsheet from two thousand and six and Memorial Society records show community fundraising was over forty-nine thousand dollars. Tonight's agenda now includes information that the city will spend taxpayer money to hire a PR firm to create a public relations campaign, quote, "for the purposes of maintaining and improving the understanding of and satisfaction of business owners, downtown stakeholders, and residents." Instead of trying to make things right, the City Commission and Task Force are now going to tell us taxpayers how wonderful this inappropriate design will be. Will they use verifiable data? So far, they have none.
Hi, this is Shane Thomas. I'm the assistant manager at Modern Skating Serve, and I'm just calling to say I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I think it'll be a great movement for the community of Royal Oak, and as you may know, skateboarding and plenty of other action sports are super popular right now. So, I think it'd be a good movement, get the kids, keep them busy. But, uh, thank you for your time. Bye.
My name is Ed Burkhardt. I am the commander of the American Legion Frank Winland Post Two Fifty Three in Royal Oak. I'm calling tonight not as an individual, but as a representative of four hundred veterans and their family members. Please note for the meeting minutes that I speak on behalf of those that I represent. The reason for my call is to request that you respect the binding authority that Municipal Code One Five Six, otherwise known as the Veterans War Memorial Ordinance, holds you to. Municipal Code One Five Six deals with the pres- preservation and the protection of a veterans memorial that was enacted in two thousand and seven, after ninety percent of the voters supported its implementation into law. Let me remind you, ordinance, ordinances are laws, and they have, you know, binding authority on all individuals and entities in which they are enacted. You're violating your oath of office by not adhering to the clear purposes of that Veterans War Memorial Ordinance was designed to do, that is, to preserve and protect it and the area around it. You like to point out only one part of the ordinance to defend your position, that you can move the memorial without another vote of the people, but six thousand six hundred and seventy-six Royal Oak residents who voted to protect the memorial from future moves, along with thousands of area veterans, disagree with you. The ordinance clearly defines that the boundaries of the area inside of the Barbara Hallman Memorial Plaza, and is also clear that this area is designated for continued use as a memorial honoring members of the American and Canadian Armed Services who have lost their lives in service of their countries. That means if you want to install a splashboard, outdoor bathrooms, or outdoor stage, an area for market or food vendors, none of that can be built on the land designated as belonging to the memorial. The purpose behind this language is to protect the memorial and the land around it from development, and to preserve the serenity and the significance that the current location and design provides. Please do the right thing, respect the voters and veterans and the design of the park. Go ahead and design it around the existing memorial and its green space. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jessica Kowalczuk, and I am calling to let the city council know that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Joey, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. If you have any questions, please feel free to call. Thanks. Bye.
My name is Jordan Mantle, and I work at Modern Skating Serve, and I support the Royal Oak Council Skate Park. Have a good day.
My name is Jerry Gorsky. I am the VFW National Council Administration member, representing the thirty-five thousand Michigan VFW members, including Acorn Post, VFW Sixteen Sixty Nine in Royal Oak. I am also a life member at Frank Winland American Legion Post Two Fifty Three in Royal Oak, and I am also a life member at Disabled American Veterans Chapter Nineteen. I'm calling tonight not as an individual, but as a representative of the Disabled American Veterans Chapter Nineteen members. I request that my official city minutes be in the minutes, and I'm speaking on behalf of those two, five hundred and ten disabled American veterans who cannot speak for themselves. I am a proud disabled American veteran who served his country. I am now speaking on behalf of my fellow disabled brothers and sisters. We disabled American veterans were ne- never approached by any representative of the city of Royal Oak, including those of the Downtown Park Task Force, for our opinion on whether or not the existing memorial structure needed improvement of any kind, including better access for those veterans with compromised mobility. Had you incorporated any sense of inclusion of veterans into your community engagement sessions, the three of you who sit on the commission and who are also members of our Downtown Park Task Force would have found out that we like where we have our Royal Oak Veterans Memorials sit where it is, and there's no handicap accessibility issue with the current setup or location. Veterans, including disabled veterans who wish to get closer to the monument to pay the respects to their fallen friend, have no problem getting around a beautiful granite ramp installed by your DDA. A ramp was installed with the assurance that this would be the final resting place for the memorial, and only by popular vote of the residents of Royal Oak could this be changed. The Disabled American Veterans of Chapter Nineteen take issue that the task force established by those of you who I speak to tonight did not include even one disabled veteran representative. The mayor had the opportunity to appoint three veteran representatives, one of which should have been a disabled American veteran representative, who could speak on behalf of disabled American veterans that visit and pay the respects to those whose names are preserved on the monument. We have the names of seven men who are still considered missing in action, or MIAs, on that monument. In fact, last Memorial Day, you featured one of those families in your Memorial Day tribute video. For families like these, this monument means much more than just a moment, excuse me, monument adds to what names. It is a shrine. It in some respects a tomb which contains the memories of their loved ones, who made the sacrifice, made in honor of our nation, and to preserve the freedoms that you and the Royal Oak residents enjoy today. I am asking you to stop disregarding the veterans and show them the respect that they deserve. They are asking for a...
Hi, this is Cole Levine, Royal Oak resident. I'm calling to show my support for the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Noah Zipser, and I am calling in support of, uh, the Royal Oak Skate Park Project effort, um, and Jordan Zupke's effort putting forth, uh, a premier park in the city of Royal Oak. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name's Jeff Timmington, and I'm a longtime citizen in Royal Oak and plan to be for a long time. Also have a little family. I got four little kids. All of them like to scooter and skateboard, and I was just calling in to let you guys know that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I would love to have a little skate park where we could all hang out and skate around safely and comfortably, and in a place where we wouldn't get in trouble from the cops. Um, if anything that we can do as a community to get this rolling, I'm all in. But, here to let you guys know, I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you for all your due, and thank you for considering our request to get a little skate park in a nice park. Thanks, guys.
Hello, this is Doug Goslin, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Mimi Stahl, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thanks. Have a great day. Bye. Hi there, my name is Mimi Stahl.
Hello, my name is Jason, and I'm ten years old, and I live in Royal Oak, and if there was a skate park, I would go with my friends and skate there. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alex Knox. I was calling to say that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Connor Wujek, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project.
Hi, my name is Ariana. My phone number is two four eight five zero six five one seven zero, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park. Um, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cameron Schneider, and I'm a resident in Royal Oak, and, um, I'm just calling to say that it would be awesome if you guys could put in a skate park, you know, for kids to learn, you know, learn how to skate, scooter, bike, rollerblade, any of that, you know, keep kids, you know, um, off the streets and in a safe place, and it would just be awesome and amazing if you guys could build us a skate park. That would be cool.
My name is James. I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Royal Oak needs a skate park really bad. Thanks.
Hello, this is Ron Wolf. As you know, uh, my ideas for the new park, you have totally ignored them. Uh, I am really chagrined at your eliminating the library steps as a stage facing the lawn in front of the memorial where people could s- uh, sit and watch concerts and also, uh, uh, celebrate the, uh, celebrate memor- where people could, uh, sit and watch concerts and also, uh, celebrate the, uh, celebrate Memorial Day properly. Instead, you're moving the memorial for what? To create more concrete slabs? You're going to destroy the wonderful cobbles that were paid for by private donations, not taxes, by, for the Barbara Holman Memorial Plaza? You're going to, you're in the process of destroying all the beautiful mountain laurel trees that provide cooling shade and a home for songbirds? You're taking away the bees the kids love? You're placing them with what? Nothing but fencing, cones? I don't understand this. Um, I had an idea for a central fountain with dancing LED-lit water to add, to be, to add to the Star Dream Fountain that actually you have gifted to Henry Ford by taking away the, uh, the beautiful surroundings of the fountains and replacing it with cheap slab cement. For what? Food trucks? Okay, now, the next thing is, I offered an idea, uh, if you remember the Metro Pass books that were once very popular? How about a debit card that where you can buy discount parking? This would be very popular with residents. After all, if they come to Royal Oak Downtown and you want people to come to Downtown, if you give them a 15% discount on, uh, on, I'd say, a hundred, fifty or a hundred dollars worth of parking on a debit card, they're gonna come to Royal Oak rather than go to a mall. And they're already taking advantage of the two-hour free parking, so why not? So, and to give a, uh, a city that, uh, to get, to give parking away to a private business, 50% of it, are you gonna make any money? No, you're still gonna lose money. Parking is, never makes money, but if you do it right, it will attract people to the city. And by using a debit pa- uh, passbook, uh, card, uh, discount cards, just like Costco or Sam's Club or Amazon Prime, you will, that could be gifted to students, uh, to your friends who, who come to Royal Oak, and, uh, and save them money, and yet make money for the businesses downtown, is a no-brainer. And yet, this is not even discussed, it's totally ignored. And I'm sure it'll be ignored this meeting. All you, all the residents care about is that you're over budget. Well, you're always over budget. What else is new? That's all I have to say. This is absolutely asinine, the way you're doing this park, and, and you're ruining the, an opportunity to make Royal Oak a destination, just like Campus Martius is for Detroit, and Washington Square is for that neighborhood in New York where millions of dollars of businesses are, have been added and created. That's all-
My name is Fran Hoffer, and I just want to leave a message to show my support for the skate, um, the Skate Park Project in Royal Oak. Um, I know just from experience what a wonderful place it is for the kids, and how it also, um, helps them feel included things where older kids and younger kids can all be together and support each other. It's really great for the community. I've seen it, um, in different areas. And I would really like, um, for the board to consider supporting this project. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Clark, 123 South Main Street in downtown Royal Oak. Um, I'm calling in tonight to support, or to call in and voice my support for, uh, Royal Oak gaining a skate park in, in this beautiful community. Uh, as somebody who's all about inspiring kids, owning Twalogy Toys, and making sure that they have all of the opportunities to be active, let out energy, and also grow their brains is, is, you know, the most important thing to me, and I think this is another great asset to the community, and making sure that, uh, that gets done for all of our youth. Again, Eric Clark, Twalogy Toys, 123 South Main Street, voicing my support for the skate park in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Gregory Mavian, M-A-V-I-N, Victor, I-A-N. And I'm currently an owner of, uh, a unit next door in the Washington condominium complex. My address is 1021. I'm in Unit D as in David. And, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, there's a building going up next to us which, uh, may impact our building and the tenants, um, inconveniently. Um, I understand there's supposed to be an elevator for the automobiles to be moved up and down into the garage, which is gonna be, uh, below a ground level. And, um, there may be some, uh, engineering issues with the vibration and things of that sort, which, uh, certainly was going to impact, uh, traffic and maybe vibration into the buildings, which we'll feel next door. And that's certainly not gonna be acceptable for, uh, the tenants. And, um, perhaps there's a, uh, uh, engineering, um, alternative or option, uh, they could be, uh, uh, solving this issue in that the entrance and the elevator could be positioned, uh, with an entrance on Hudson instead of the Washington entrance. And, uh, some of the, uh, owners, as well as the, uh, board, uh, is concerned about, uh, snow plowing and piles of snow at the entrance of our parking garage, and perhaps that at the next door new building, which will impact traffic congestion and an issue for the tenants to get in and out, not only for the Hudson, uh, or not only for the Washington, uh, condominium owners, but perhaps, uh, even for the new owners in the new building. So, uh, I, I'm just calling to, to solve a potential problem. Uh, we're trying to be good neighbors, but certainly we don't want to be, uh, uh, inconvenienced or, uh, our, our, uh, traffic flow obstructed, or even vibrations or, uh, noise from the elevator, uh, that's gonna move the cars up and down, uh, which could impact, uh, us owners. But in any event, it'd be really, uh, nice to reconsider this, uh, if possible. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, that land being developed, I think, for the most part. But certainly we want it, uh, um, to satisfy all owners, all neighbors on that block, and to make it easy as possible for all of us, uh, including our new neighbors. So please consider that, uh, inconvenience and, uh, the engineering issues which are going to be, uh, impacting us. I appreciate your time and, uh, your, your thoughtful consideration for this issue. Once again, my name is Gregory Mavian. I'm at, uh, 1021 South Washington Avenue, Unit D as in David. And, uh, my name is, again, M-A-V-I-N. Good afternoon.
Hello, my name is James Scarsola. Just calling to support the, uh, Royal Oak Skate Park.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Barra, and I'm calling regarding the, uh, plan for a park in downtown, which I think is very good. Um, be a nice place for people to congregate, to meet friends, et cetera. But I question the wisdom of the splash pad without, uh, bathroom facilities. Uh, if there's no place for, you know, children particularly to make a restroom stop, uh, where do they go? The library? The restaurants? Neither of which is going to want them in the area, because if they are wet, they can have water on the floor, it could be a slip hazard for other people, and it could be a problem. So, please reconsider, please consider the fact that you probably should have some restroom facilities with the idea of the park. Thank you. Bye.
Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission, that concludes the public comment for this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwanger, and, uh, thank you to everyone who took time out of the schedule to call in to public comments. Um, I just want to give, you know, accolades to all the people that called in about, um, you know, wanting and desiring a upgraded and new skate park in Royal Oak. Uh, to me, uh, this was one of the best public comments we've had. Just had a bunch of people that liked to skate, wanna see their kids skate, see the value of it in the community, and they called in with sincerity, uh, without any politics or conspiracies or anything like that. They just want to get their point across that this is something they really, really want. Um, and, uh, and just to be clear, from, from the city side, um, you know, we, we don't have a, a project on the docket right now. This is a really a grassroots effort, uh, to, to get, um, some things moving in a direction to where these folks can, um, can, uh, you know, set out on their mission and vision. And I know, um, there's been a petition at the Parks and Rec Board for the skate park. I know there's been some details discussed. And, um, you know, I just want to encourage that, you know, when you deal with government and 60,000 people that live here, we kinda have this defined process we have to go through. And so I just want to encourage, um, you know, the folks, uh, that, that, you know, want a skate park to, to continue to work with our, our Parks Board in the beginning. We have appointed citizens there to, you know, give advice and, and determine how we fit things into our Parks Master Plan and all of that. If there's ideas to work quicker, uh, certainly, um, you know, our folks can, can help. And I know, um, there's been some discussions about funding, and, uh, you know, that, that's always a challenge in these days. Um, so, you know, we gotta continue to be clever and creative, and, um, and look at, at these things, um, you know, as a living, breathing creature. And Rome wasn't built overnight, but I'm really impressed with, especially all the young people that, that called in and, um, you know, expressed their, their desires, what they want, what they see as best, uh, from their point of view. And I know, and I, and I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues up here. We really appreciate it, because hearing people's perspectives that are rooted in, you know, genuine sincerity means a lot to us. So, thank you very, very much for taking time to, to call in tonight. All right, so moving, uh, with our agenda here, uh, this evening, um, that brings us to item seven, which is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off for discussion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull items H and I off the agenda tonight.
H and I. Okay, anybody else? Okay, the consent agenda now consists of City Commission Special Goal Setting Meeting Minutes from January 30th, City Commission Meeting Minutes February 22nd, Claims February 26th and March 9th, Approval of Purchase Orders, Award of Professional Engineering Services for Surveying 2022 Projects, Contract Modification, Contract S 1903, 2019, Spot Sewer Repairs, and the Approval to Abolish Brownfield Plan, Royal Seven Properties, which is 3380 Greenfield Road. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. All right, no discussion on the consent agenda. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to H and I. Commissioner Colo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm starting with H. This is the, uh, sidewalk cafe fee, um, waiver for this upcoming year. Uh, I just want to thank staff for bringing this to our attention. Uh, this is gonna be of great value to our friends and neighbors, um, in the restaurant industry in our downtown. Um, so by waiving these fees, I mean, every little bit's gonna help. I mean, so many of these restaurants have been disproportionately impacted, uh, during the COVID pandemic. Um, so I want to thank staff for bringing this to, um, our attention, and, uh, I look forward to moving this, uh, so I move this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. All right, I'll just add, I echo those comments. I mean, every little bit helps. And, uh, you know, while we can, you know, maybe move the needle completely to a point where everybody is in, in perfect shape, you know, to the extent that we can help, we will. Uh, and so, um, you know, we're, we're happy to do this with our, to help out our fine restaurateurs in town. I'll call for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right. Uh, I, proclamation honoring the life of worker Shirley Johnson. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as everyone knows, um, Senator Johnson passed away last month, or in January. Um, yeah, I did not know Senator Johnson. Um, I did not live in Royal Oak when she represented, uh, this community, but, um, she represented it, uh, loyally from, I think, 1981 until 2006. Um, long-serving public servant, so I'm happy that we are, um, recognizing her here tonight.
Commissioner Colo, anybody else? Commissioner Colo, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I forgot to make the motion that we, um, approved this proclamation tonight.
Yeah, we have motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. All right, um, discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right. That gets us through the, uh, published consent agenda, which brings us to item nine, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishments. Um, we have a couple items here, the first being, uh, Request for Approval Plan of Operation Culinary Investments, uh, which is Alchemy and Johnny Speakeasy. Um, and I see Chief O'Donoghue is on. Chief?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Uh, the Royal Oak Police Department has received a request from Culinary Investments, LLC to amend their pa- plan of operation. The applicant, doing businesses, doing business as Alchemy, Preps, Gaming Room, and Nightclub, and Johnny Speakeasy located at 213 and 219 South Main Street, has requested to remove Preps Gaming Room and Nightclub from their plan. The applicant has permanently closed Preps Gaming Room, uh, and Nightclub located at 219 South Main. Alchemy and Johnny Speakeasy will continue to operate. However, neither will operate with a dance permit or entertainment permit. Uh, due to the closing of this space, the outdoor service area will be reduced. Uh, the applicant is not requesting any changes in the floor plans for Alchemy or Johnny Speakeasy. A wall, uh, will be constructed to separate, uh, Alchemy from the former nightclub space. Uh, that's, that area will revert back to the property owner, and however, the entire basement will remain Johnny Speakeasy. Overall capacity has already been set. Uh, the final capacity for the outdoor service area will be revisited, um, after we receive recommendations from both building and fire department. Uh, the police department has no objections to this change, and if approved, the applicants will have to comply with all planning, zoning, and building requirements and restrictions.
Any questions for the chief? I don't see any questions for the chief. Um, is the petitioner here, or, uh, I mean, it's a pretty simple change. I don't know if I see, see Johnny on or anyone that they'd have anything more to explain. Okay, all right. I'll leave it to my colleagues. Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this recommendation.
A motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Um, discussion. Now, I'll just add, this is pretty simple. We're happy to see a, um, another entrepreneur in town rethink and scope, uh, their business, especially during these most challenging times. Um, and certainly, um, you know, the changes have been very positive so far that we've seen at this place of business, and, uh, we certainly wish Chef Johnny and his team the best of luck moving forward. So, I will, uh, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us down to, uh, the second part of the, um, Liquor Control Commission License Establishments, which is the annual review. Chief?
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Commission, the police department has conducted a review of all our on-premise liquor establishments and found eight businesses, businesses received violations in 2020. As part of an MLCC decoy operation, the following businesses received a violation, uh, for serving to a minor. Businesses received violations in twenty twenty. As part of an MLCC decoy operation, the following businesses received a violation uh for serving to a minor. Uh, Wahlburgers in January, in February, Mount Shelly and Hopcat, and in March, Bolero and Guzzling Alley. In addition, Yield Diamonds and uh Alchemy have received violations from MLCC for non-sufficient fund checks in twenty twenty. Uh, the fire department and building department have conducted their annual reviews and inspections of all on-premise establishments. Uh, Jason Craig of the building department said there's no issues with any LCC estab- licensed establishment. Sean Lynn Borse of the fire department stated there are two locations with some outstanding issues. Diamond Steakhouse uh located at Hundred South Main and Alchemy's both need to complete some work associated with their fire suppression systems. All uh liquor license renewal fees have been paid to the clerk's office. The treasurer's uh office has reported that there are four establishments that have unpaid tax bills. Two of which, Hopcat Town Tavern are uh closed and uh under we understa- they're closed for good. The other two, City Tavern and Wahlburgers, uh and speaking with the treasurer's office, they're going to continue to work with those applicants uh to get that issue resolved. In closing, the report is a six-year uh statistical summary of all calls for service and then a synopsis of all those uh calls. And then uh, as always, due to the large size of the Oakland County Food Service Inspection Report, uh we provided a link. Unfortunately, um, we originally sent a PDF, so that made the link not live. So uh, I believe we're going to get that resolved. So anyone who wants to see this can click on that link uh tomorrow morning.
Questions for chief on the annual report? And uh, Commissioner Duba?
In general, a pretty quiet year, right, chief?
Uh, very quiet year. It's been a challenging year for everybody, particularly our restaurants. So uh, but uh, very quiet indeed.
I have no objections. It's a noticeably different report than we've received in past years.
Anybody else? Chief, you don't need us to review and accept this report view, or is it just here for?
Uh, no, no, I, with with the annual review, um, the only action would be if the city commission were um had a concern and we're going to recommend non-renewal. So no action means uh they all automatically renew.
Right. Yeah, I don't think there's any, well, I mean, I shouldn't speak for my colleagues, but I don't see any reasons myself that we would dictate that action. Anybody? Okay. All right, good. All right. Anything else to answer?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, chief. Appreciate the hard work of uh of the team pulling this together. I know you guys have been busy uh this year and um certainly um. You know, it's a necessary thing to do. And like always, we appreciate the hard work and information you provide us to help us make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, all right, this brings us to item ten, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Rezoning of one zero zero three South Washington Avenue. Uh, first reading, I see Mr. Twing there. He pops up just like uh, you know, the aura of uh Tim Twing right there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Uh, yes, you do have a recommendation from the uh Planning Commission. Uh, on that property, which is at the southeast corner of uh Washington and Hudson. Uh, this project was approved as a PUD uh back in uh August of two thousand and nineteen uh by the city commission. Um, it wasn't, the petitioner did not proceed at that time uh with the development. Uh, they ran into some uh issues and have submitted, the new owner, I should say. Uh, submitted revised plan, which raised the building up was the primary uh change. Uh, they ran into a water table issue. So the uh, rather than the underground parking, uh you have a partial underground um parking lot. And then two levels above grade, and then the uh residential units above that. The number of parking spaces and the overall number of units have not changed. They are still at uh forty-eight units and sixty-three parking spaces. As I said, the building raised up, the height went from previously approved forty-three feet uh to fifty-five feet uh to the roof line. Uh, as was mentioned under public comment, uh the parking ramp system that you normally see in a deck has been replaced with uh a lift system. Uh, that pulls into the uh, that pulls in off of Washington, which is where the prior entrance and exit were also located. Um, the petitioner is, is architect at least is on the line. Uh, so if you have questions in regards to some of those items, I'm sure he can uh help you address them. Uh, they are also proposing a green roof, uh as you can see on uh part of the plans. Uh, the planning commission is reckoning approval uh with uh certain contingencies. Uh, there is a suggested resolution if you concur with that uh included on the commission letter. If there's any question with me, I'd be happy to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing at this point? Uh, Commissioner Macy?
Sounds like you heard public comment. There was some concern about the lift on Washington causing a backup. Because it's different than just pulling in and going off to your spot. You have to wait for the, you know, presumably for the lift to come back down. Any thoughts about that or about the um possibility of moving that to Hudson?
I believe both of those issues were brought up at the planning commission meeting. Um, Brian Howard is on the phone to the architect. And I I I believe in my recollection was uh, there were some issues with that from their standpoint. But I don't want to speak for for him. So I'll let I'll let Brian address that.
Right. Thank, thanks, Tim. I will address that. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um, it did come up at planning commission. And um, what we have determined from the auto automobile elevator company is that because of our vertical distance that we're going um either down four and a half feet or up four and a half feet or up nine feet, that the, it will always return back to street level. So whether it's an ingress or egress elevator, because we do have both, there are two elevators here. Um, that the amount of time from it, a car entering and going up and and coming back is going to be no more than thirty to forty-five seconds, depending obviously on somebody pulling out of the elevator itself. What we also did though, to somewhat alleviate the Starbucks on Woodward issue um is to push the elevator back far enough off the face of the building where actually you can stack two cars behind it and not be into Washington. So the premise behind it is that someone would be in the, go into the elevator. You could then have two cars behind it um in the entrance elevator and be able to, you know, again, go up and or down um quite quickly. So that that was our, we we did discuss this at planning. Um, and I I think we we somewhat made everybody comfortable with with what we were trying to do.
Any other questions, Commissioner Perush?
Um, this is a question for Mr. Twing. Mr. Twing, my recollection is that Billings Place Apartments on Main, which are just north of Eleven Mile. Also have an elevator in their parking system. Is my recollection correct?
No, they they've only got grade level parking, but what they were proposing were lifts that would just let you stack uh two cars in one space. If a, if a tenant wanted to pay for the extra. So it wasn't, wasn't an elevator in this sense. It was a um, kind of like a garage or uh repair shop lift that you could pull your car in, lift it up, and put another one underneath it.
Okay, thank you. And just to speak of this issue of cars backing up. Um, with a very tall condo apartment building in Washington, um, which is just south of, all the entrances is close to where the Ballroom Theater entrance was. And where Stagecrafters is. Many more units in that building than there are in this proposed building. And there's an entrance off of Washington into their garage area. And I have never, ever, ever seen one car follow another, uh either coming in or going out. Um, it, everyone leaves and and comes in and out at entirely different times. I've never, ever, ever seen a backup. And that's a much larger, much, much larger building with many more units than this. So I just, I have a hard time envisioning that there's ever going to be a backup uh waiting to them to or out of the garage um on Washington. I just, given our history of other parking's um components within residential buildings. I I just don't think that's an issue. It's not like a Starbucks situation at all.
Commissioner Perush, that's a really good point. I mean, when you think about sixty-three cars, you know, not all of them are going to leave the residence. You know, at the same time, like you said, and if they leave anywhere between, you know, seven in the morning to, you know, nine in the morning. You know, that's, that's at least one every few minutes, which would not be, you know, an issue at all if they all leave. Um, you know, so I I think we've seen that, like you, the point you bring up in downtown is is, I mean, you have to wait for the garage doors to open and close. You have a similar time delay. And um, and I, and and you're right, I've never seen a backup uh on on Main. And that, you would notice it because it's right in our downtown. Commissioner Colo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Twing, can you speak about the site triangles and um and what's going on with the vision here and the lack of the ten feet?
Uh, well, the ordinance provision is in regards to um where they would be exiting the site. Um, and it discusses having a clearance area that measured from the property line back ten feet and along the property line ten feet. Uh, I believe what they've proposed to address that on the uh egress portion is there's a column there and then an opening. Um, uh, in the hope that uh that provides that visibility. Um, and I believe Mr. Howard, it may have some other comments in regards to how they're trying to address it.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Um, yeah, so so again, the 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 premise behind this is these garage doors are not sitting right on the property line, um, i.e. the fifth, um, other Billings Place. I mean, there's a, there's not much of a buffer between where those garage doors are and where that sidewalk is. So what we tried to do was to push the garage doors back, a a car space, which would allow a car to inch their way out. And get to the point where they're looking left and right, you know, at a slow pace before they merge onto Washington. So, you know, it 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 happens quite a bit in downtown. Cuisino's, I think, is is similar to that, where you're pulling out and you're kind of inching your way out. My office where I'm in uh at five twelve North Main, um, John Wengler's building, um, we inch our way out. Um, you know, we're not opposed to putting the mirrors up, things like that, um, to 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 try and have you know, pedestrians and or the vehicular traffic looked, you know, be careful, you know, not hit a pedestrian certainly. Um, but we felt that the distance of, you know, somebody inching their way out, we felt that the ten feet was, um, I mean, we needed to max, we did maximize our footprint on our building. Um, but we also felt that we made our driveway width wider than what's typically provided. So um, we have our bike storage parking on the on the south side of of our drive. We made our drives wider. Um, so we really did feel like we accomplished or tried to accomplish the fact that people are going to, you know, understand that you're in an urban setting and you're going to be walking. And or people who are driving will be careful. That's our thought process.
So um, I I I guess my first concern is safety. While I would hope most people are going to have a heads up. Is there anything that um, and maybe Tim might might know this or whomever, um, we can add to this to make sure that we're optimizing pedestrian safety. Um, as people, because that's a, it it's a very walkable corridor.
Um, you know, this is a entry from downtown for some of the south side residents there. So I I guess I just look to some enhancements there.
Right. And and what we've done in in past situations, including the fifth uh Skylofts, they've got bells and frankly, lights that that go off when somebody's exiting the site. Uh, you know, some of the parking decks I've seen in other communities that exit right onto the sidewalk do the same thing where there's a light that flashes and then has an audible warning as well. You could add that to this situation. Uh, I would point out again to uh Brian's credit is they did set the building back at least two feet. Uh, they did only have a column that came down. So really what's in the site clearance corner, corner issue is the column for the building. It's not a solid wall that goes up. So as you're leaving, you'll have an opportunity to see the sidewalk and then the columns in the way. So it's not, it's just not a clear zone area. Uh, but you could add those other things to it uh in terms to warn the pedestrian that somebody's exiting.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. And then um, you know, a another question I have is um, I'm looking at this and looking down Washington. And I see this, this is a vibrant entrance into our town. This is a great introduction into Roale Oak. Um, we have a lot of good building going on here. Um, this is, I I think, a uh could be a great project. Um, what do you think about those? Came back to the walkability. I'm worried that we are building a corridor, a wall that's going to not have commercial space on it. You know, part of the mixed use, uh, part of our zoning is we want to have, um, you know, we're looking at first floor commercial space. Um, and I see you have what you call a meeting space here. Was there any thought into making that? Can you talk about your process of making that a residence-only meeting space as opposed to maybe a commercial space to keep that walkability up? Because uh, I I think that would really pick me over the top in the community benefit here.
No, I appreciate that. Um, we we did look at that. Um, we we we, back when we were designing this, the first time we did it and came in front of you. We actually were proposing retail space. The problem we ran into was twofold. One was having to provide more parking on-site for that retail space, which we just could not provide. Second to that is we did feel it was a little bit of a struggle for somebody to you know, pay rent. Um, uh, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's a very walkable. I mean, it's going to be even more walkable with the Griffin and 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 with the other project on Washington. I don't know what the name of it is. But there, it is going to be extremely walkable. The fear was that you're going to provide a retail space that nobody's going to be in, and it's going to be for lease all the time. So what we chose to do instead, and Alex is on the line, he's the owner of the project. Um, he collectively kind of came to me, he and his group came to me and said, hey, how about we offer something that nobody else does? We're not going to put a gym on the corner, you know, that every other one of these buildings does. Let's provide a tenant-only meeting space with COVID and all this stuff going on. How about the idea, we're going to have vending machines in there, you know, coffee bar. But it's only for the tenants to meet with people. They don't have to take them to their apartment. They're not taking them. So 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 it's, it's not a Starbucks. It's not a coffee shop. It's a space that the tenants can use for meetings or whatever. The reason we set the first floor wall back as far off of Hudson as we did is to provide for outdoor seating. So through all these COVID and all this stuff that's going on, we felt creating outdoor space was as important as creating indoor space. And we also felt that that space inside could be collectively utilized or the tenants could utilize that. So I think it actually will probably be more vibrant than a standard retail space because it's going to be a twenty-four seven. It's not going to be closed. It's not going to be, not going to shut the lights off. So, you know, maybe it's um, you know, mom and dad coming to see, you know, their kid. And all of a sudden, they're they're sitting down there and they're hanging out for a while before they go out to dinner downtown.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And I'm sure it'll be very nice for the tenants in that space. Um, I I'm looking beyond those fifty-four units all up. Uh, I'm looking beyond those fifty-four units, all of everyone in the community, and I'm looking down Washington. I'm really worried that we're making this a wall off. So um, I would, uh, my preference would be a a different space where that is is accessible to the community and um, I think we could work on parking. I I think that's a solvable issue. But with that, I will sit back and listen to my uh fellow commissioners.
And I and I appreciate that, Commissioner Collo. And I think, you know, when you look at and and maybe Commissioner Douglas has a lot more to say on this, given, you know, she's a former chair of the Michigan Planning Association. But, you know, in simple terms, uh, speaking on me, I I see it as almost, the space is leased out by the tenants there, the forty-three tenants there in a way, in their rent, uh indirectly pay for this common space uh to do any number of things that a retail space would be. So, you know, they can go and close on their, you know, car payments or, you know, if they have someone coming in and they want to do a deed or meet their lawyer or or, you know, they work from home and they gotta meet with the client or some, whatever it may be. I mean, the key is, is that we can't judge, you know, when somebody leases out that space, is it going to be a drugstore? Is it going to be an office space, whatever it's going to be? But we at least know here that that space will be activated. So when people are walking down, you know, the street, they're going to see chairs and conference tables, whatever it may be in there, which is, you know, primarily from an optics point of view, from the city point of view, is is what we're looking for above and beyond, let's say, you know, um, some other things that could be a record wall, so to speak. Um, so, you know, it is activated uh for for use, um, although, um, you know, it's not a technical retail point of view. And in that, you know, part of town, um, you know, we've looked at some other projects down there and and, you know, attracting, you know, retail establishments there with the appropriate parking and all that is still a little bit of challenge in today's time where, you know, a lot of stuff is moving online. Uh, so, you know, there are a lot of dynamics here at play. Your point is not invalid. Uh, but there's some things that the planning commission, I think, looked at in a little bit more detail uh as well uh with our experience with other projects.
I'm just channeling my inner Commissioner Marley. What can I say?
Um, I did see uh Commissioner Dubach with his hand up and then I saw Commissioner Douglas potentially. And Monica, you're way up in my, or Commissioner Hunt, you're way up in my right-hand corner of the screen. I got to keep remembering to look up there too. So I don't know if you had your hand up. Oh, you did? Okay, we'll go with Commissioner Hunt. Uh, and then we'll 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 go down through Commissioner Dubach and then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Howard, just one quick question. I know that you've given some, um, you've taken into account some things to mitigate the traffic flow um by moving the cars in or allowing for two cars to stack. How feasible is it to, at this point, to change the entrance to the side street, to um Hudson Street? And then that way it also helps with the pedestrian issue. So at this point in time, how feasible is it to make that move?
Difficult. We did look at that originally, um, when we first started this project. But I do have to preface that by saying that was when we were trying to figure out a ramp system for the parking garage. And that was not doable because of the depth of the property and you couldn't make the turn. And and so there 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 were logistic issues in terms of trying to figure that parking deck out coming off of Hudson. What I really tried to do when when we were redoing this project was to look at both options. And we did do an get investigative study on how we could make the elevator work. The problem is you need the length of the property, the hundred and fifty feet versus the hundred feet to really be able to come in. Even even in an elevator situation, you can't come in and then if unless I have an elevator that's going to turn me ninety degrees to then exit back out, we lost, I think we lost like five parking spaces minimum per floor, which again, didn't get us to where we were trying to get to. Is it possible? Probably. Is it probable? I I don't, I don't, it'd be tough. It'd be really super tough. I would propose, because if the if the issue has to do with the cars, you know, entering and exiting pedestrian traffic, you know, I get all that absolutely a hundred percent. Now, is it an issue with the building next to us at ten seventeen of cars exiting out? Because granted, their their drive approach is is somewhat close to ours. We would be willing to absolutely put in an alarm system or something to that effect to 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 create a pedestrian awareness of when a car is exiting um or entering um our our elevator system.
Thank you.
Mr. Dubach.
All right. Uh, I guess I'll start by saying I'm I'm not really uh sweating the the parking ingress egress on on Washington. It's similar to other situations we have in the city. I do think kind of the uh the buzzing alarm system with the lights is uh effective just to make sure the residents are aware. I'm also, I'm not that worried about backups, as Commissioner Purush said. Residential is the lightest kind of traffic flow into and out of a a parking area. So the idea that there would be that kind of backup is incredibly unlikely with 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 this kind of development. What I do want to talk about a little bit is uh the green roof. And if you knew details about it, for example, how much rainwater is going to be absorbed by that green roof? Would it be the first inch of rainwater to fall? Would it be two inches? Do you do you have any idea, any numbers on what that's going to be keeping out of our system? Because right now the parking lot, at least you're building on, does not have any attention to that.
It doesn't have any storm water currently. Um, and that's, that's all going into your system. As a matter of fact, the building is as well. So you almost have a true fifteen thousand square foot parking lot. So we we do, we do have some numbers on that. Um, so we've engaged a uh green roof consultant out of Traverse City who has been helping us on another project here in Royal Oak. And by doing the different, so the difference, I don't know if you know the differences between a green roof and a blue roof, but the differences are, when you create a blue roof, it actually creates more absorption ability and will actually put zero water into the system. On a green roof, it is less dense and it percolates through and then trickles into the system at a slow rate. So we're proposing actually a hybrid system here. We're actually talking about doing a blue roof and a green roof, which what that allows us to do is put very minimal amount of water. And I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but let's just say it's uh probably uh reduced considerably on what is going into the system currently.
I mean, I would love it if we had even just a ballpark percentage on.
I would say that we were pro, we're less than ten percent in what's going into the system currently. So.
You're going to hold ninety percent out of us?
Ninety percent of it or absorb ninety percent of it.
As and even if, even if you're up by ten percent, eighty percent reduction off the site is exactly the direction we want to be going as a city.
Yeah. We understood that. We we definitely understand that. And to be honest with you, every project in Royal Oak that I'm doing right now, we're proposing this same concept because ultimately we all want every site, every project should take on and solve their own water issue. And we we just feel that strongly.
No, I very much appreciate that. And just for the sake of anyone watching who might think, well, now you're putting all these residences there and people are going to be washing dishes and and showering and flushing. That is not our water issue. Our water issue is storm water runoff, not not people taking their showers in the morning. So.
Especially when you have a water table that's at seven feet uh below grade there.
Right.
Which we ran into.
So that's a, that's a tremendous public benefit. I appreciate that. Um, is that a feature that is one hundred percent locked in? If you were to get your approval, does this approval commit you to that feature?
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Yes.
Yep.
Then a little bit just about the the street level. I, you know, I'm I I am sympathetic to Commissioner Collo's argument that it would be, uh, you know, it'd be our preference to have uh street level, you know, retail space there. I I'm, I understand the the case that you're making, but my belief is anyone that's going to pay to live in Royal Oak, pay the rates to live in Royal Oak, you know, what what the rates are going to be here. Um, it's because they want to enjoy the third spaces that we have to offer and not actually be entertaining so much in the space that they live, but are going to be out in town. So I'm I'm curious about that, the value uh equation there. And especially given the, you know, we have the development uh south of Harrison on Washington, the Griffin, as you said, the increasing density in this area, it feels like demand for any number of services that could go into a space like that is certainly on the rise in the next, you know, five, ten, twenty years.
I certainly can't speak for my client. But I I will say this, though, that the reason we we did not include retail at this space was the additional six parking spaces we had to provide on site. It was driven by parking.
I think it's because you're, there are literally two monstrous parking decks owned by our our neighbor OCC, just north of this development. Who I'm, I'm sure, I know we've been having conversations about allowing uh or, you know, usage for the public in those spaces. So that's a shame if it's six spots that that were the deterrent uh to to completing the walkability of Washington. I feel like that's a a missed opportunity.
I I will, I will also um comment this as well, um, that Alex, the owner and myself and his development team have also talked about doing a uh concierge service at this particular building. So don't just assume, I I I don't think any of us can assume that all of a sudden, you know, at five o'clock, the lights go off and it's and it's dark. With a concierge service with the fact that you got Amazon boxes all coming in all hours of the day. The idea is, is that it's a vibrant, um, you know, twenty-four-seven. I'm not going to say there's somebody's going to be manning it twenty-four-seven, but what I will say is it will certainly be, you know, lit up twenty-four-seven.
Um, and it's not a deal breaker for me, but I I think we do need to get to a place where we have a very clear direction on this because I don't want to be creating, whether or not the residents are using it, it's lit up, it's not accessible to the public, it's not really a walkable space. And I think that's the opposite direction that we want to be going as a city, especially in a corridor like this. Um, that being said, you're directly across from residential to.
Right.
If if you had a retail space there and wanted to have a restaurant there, that was going to be open until midnight or two o'clock would be hearing from them. They don't want it. Right? So I understand these things cut both ways. I guess that's the crux of my questions. I definitely have one more, but we'll see if I can get back to it. Oh, that's it. Did you and the designers be like, so it's a brand new building. I assume everything's, you know, hyper-efficient, but had you considered, uh, you know, I appreciate the green roof, but lead certification, any other sort of environmental or sustainability elements in the design?
Well, the building, we have, we are designing this building for sustainable materials. Um, everything's going to be sustainable within it. Um, obviously, the green roof helps us tremendously. We're we're even, we're even discussing, you know, impervial pavers, you know, in 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 drive areas, things like that. So we we really have looked at this thing as a building that, you know, I'm not going to say it's, you know, you know, net zero, you know, as Woody likes to say, but um, but 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 it is, it is a building that's that we're all going to be proud of when it's all said and done. Uh, it's, it's, you know, I have an ownership that is, that is committed to it. And and we, as the architect, are committed to it and we want to give something back.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Collo's question and and part of Commissioner Dubach's questions illustrate a conundrum that the planning commission is looking at uh as we speak. And in fact, at tomorrow night's meeting, uh, subject relative to this is on the agenda. Uh, the development demand we see in Royal Oak is for housing. And I I think we, as a commission, agree that we want to be able to offer a wide variety of housing and to allow as many people who want to live in Royal Oak to live in Royal Oak. Um, so that's the, that's the demand that we at the planning commission are always addressing. I mean, we have to uh, listen to the proposals that come before us and the proposals that are coming before us are allows largely for um housing and or for uh multifamily housing. And um, much of that is proposed in our, along our commercial corridors because that's where there are spaces available. Um, and a lot of those sites are smallish and and this site too is is small as well. And the our, the zoning currently requires, it permits housing in a commercial corridor, but requires retail on the ground floor. And we're finding that doesn't work for two reasons. One, the the reason we've heard about here from Mr. Howard a moment ago is that you now have to provide parking for that retail space. But two, uh, developments where we have required ground floor retail struggle mightily to lease that space out. And and even logic tells us that a an isolated retail space along a street struggles to survive, to build a customer ship. I mean, yes, people walking by are interested in seeing that space. Um, but unless you've got sort of a a a line of retail, um, it's hard for those businesses uh the that locate there to maintain. I mean, you look at car dealerships, there's a reason why all the car dealerships are in the same place. Um, and that's because it aggregates uh customer traffic. So and yet, to Commissioner Collo's point, we do want to make our corridors uh walkable, interesting to people. And um, I don't have a solution to that. As I say, it's a conundrum, but it is one. Um, we will be discussing it tomorrow's planning commission and and down the road as well to try and and find a way to both meet the housing demand in our community, keep our community walkable, um, and accommodate retail or or commercial uses in appropriate places.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Commissioner Collo?
Um, so that not to keep on this uh space uh too much because there's a lot to this project. To Commissioner Douglas's point, um, there's some really interesting writings and work out there about this uh problem, right? And commercial spaces in a small um residential unit. Um, and I'm, you know, you're you're very well versed in planning, so I'm sure you've heard some of this. But um, one of the problems is that usually when you have a commercial space, it's large, it's too large, and it just doesn't get let out because no one can afford, there's high rents, just becomes a depreciation and deduction for the landlord. As opposed to a smaller space, smaller spaces tend to rent out better. And especially in this quarter, Commissioner Douglas, if you look at the Washington building right next door, has commercial spaces along its front facade on Washington Avenue. Um, so there would be a walk, you know, in, I think this, I heard a quote, is a eighty-six score on rockability, uh seventy-six or sixty-seven in bikeability. Uh, so it's a quarter that could be used and is used for walking. Um, and there's other retail on this first floor. So I think it keeps the flow of the neighborhood a little bit better. Um, and and just, it would bring the project together a little more. And to Commissioner Dubach's point, if it's six parking spaces, that is going to kill that potential improvement, which is a great community benefit, I am more than happy to waive the requirement for six parking spaces. And I, if there's a plan we could see that would reflect that, uh, you know, I'd be also be happy moving forward with its approval tonight and then maybe seeing a second option at second reading. But um, I I would like to potentially see that idea. And I I love the green roof, so that's all I have right now.
Anybody else?
I don't think, um, uh, Mayor, my my client, for some reason, is still in the waiting room. Um, he's not able to to chime in.
Well, what is your, your, there are two people in the waiting room. One is not identified and just has a phone number.
Oh, that might be hit, that might be him on the phone. Um, Alex Mansour.
No name associated with it.
There is no name? Okay. Uh, bear with me one second, please.
Okay, well, we figured that out.
Four digits, I can admit them. Well, I'll admit them, and if it's not him, I'll remember.
Well, uh, to go back to Commissioner Collo's, I guess, question to the rest of the commission would be, um, if the amount of commercials or or amount of space is adequate, um, and it's just a question of how it's being used, you could approve this on first reading with that being designated as commercial space uh and and waive an additional six spaces. I mean, the I mean, the, you're already waiving from. 96 required residential spaces to 63. We'd simply have to deal with the other. Six spaces that would have been required.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Perush right now.
Thank you. On two different issues. First of all, in terms of relocating the entrance and exit to the parking area onto West Hudson. My concern about that would be the temptation for people exiting the garage. To turn right and to go through the residential neighborhood to get to Main Street. Rather than coming out on Washington and having a variety of choices to get to Main Street if they want to go that way. I think it would increase significantly, potentially more traffic on West Hudson through the residential neighborhood. And I, I don't think that that would be a good thing. So I'm comfortable with leaving the exit and entrance to the garage onto Washington. I really don't think they're going to have a stacking problem, given our history with other garages in the city. I think adding an alarms would be probably a beneficial thing to do. It's outside of the downtown, and so it's not necessarily an area where pedestrians are going to be expecting cars to be going in and out. Unlike a parking structure, which is very visible. So I think adding the alarms is, is a good idea. But I think that's going to be the only potential addition that I would add here. In terms of the, the commercial space on the first floor. I just have the same concerns as the, as the architect and the owner about the. Ability to actually rent out that space to a commercial tenant that is viable. Given the, the high number of empty commercial spaces that we see throughout our downtown. And granted, there is a significant amount of that that is due to the pandemic. But even before the pandemic started, there was a higher vacancy rate in most commercial spaces than any of us were comfortable with. And that's in the downtown area where you want to focus as much commercial traffic as possible. So unless you have a high, as Commissioner Douglas has mentioned, unless you have a concentration. Of commercial uses in one area, having just one or two standing along together. I don't think drives enough commercial traffic to make them viable, at least not in this, in this situation. And I think it's going to take decades for that to turn around. So I think their, their proposed use of the space as a, as a community space, which is vibrant and open 24/7. I think is a good use of that space. I can see, you know, tenants wanting to have book club meetings there and other types of activities. Drawing in people other than just the tenants in the building. So I think at this point in time, that's probably the best use of that space. And I think it's a, it's a wise use, given the economic realities that we're standing at.
Anybody else? Okay, I know it sounds like we have the, the petitioner here as well.
Yeah, he is at the 9641. That is, that is his phone number. I just got a chat.
Yeah, he's not obligated to have to say anything, but if he wants to, you know, chime in, I'll afford him the opportunity right now to talk a little bit more about. You know, his perspective on the project and maybe help address some of the questions that have been brought up as well, Mr. Howard.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Hit star six to unmute yourself, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I missed, I've been waiting here for quite a bit of a while, so I kind of missed everything but the last five minutes. So I can, I can tell you that we are committed to this project. We initially did want to put retail space in the, on the first floor, but I believe we were advised against it. For similar reasons of what was indicated today. But if that's still on the table, I think it would be actually beneficial to us and to the neighborhood if we can add some sort of retail space on the first floor.
So, but either way, I would imagine, Mr. Twing, if. You know, this commission were to waive the six spots and allow for a commercial space down there. Then it could go either way to keep up with, you know, whatever the market demands are. Or influences are in the area. I mean, they could still lease out the property to themselves and do the existing plan, right? I mean, that's.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Or they could take advantage of a wave six spots, because there is parking on the street there, there are other options. And put in some sort of retail element there that, that could come for. You know, how they see, how they see fit, right? That would get more flexibility.
Correct. Yes.
And it wouldn't be any different, I mean, our downtown, we don't have parking requirements, except for residential.
Right.
This is an extension of downtown eventually, in terms of.
I think the only distinction you would have to make is that the, the allocated space be allowed to be used for retail commercial space. And not solely a residence, a residence meeting room. Short of that, and we'll address the parking space. As part of the development agreement, which we'd come back to you as second reading.
Okay.
Your first reading, so if that's, if that's the indication of the commission, we'll have the modifications done by the second reading.
Mr. Macy.
Well, several people have mentioned tonight, I think, both Mr. Howard and then a couple of commissioners. The issue of open retail space that we already have in our downtown. And so it sounds like we're moving towards perhaps making this a retail space, which sounds like it would be a benefit to the developer and also the downtown. Are we going to end up with another empty space down there? Do you have an idea of what we put there or are you planning to make it a meeting space until you find someone to run it to? I'm just, I'm wondering if we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot here.
Well, I think, I think the fact that we would certainly try and lease it first. You know, I don't know right off the top of my head who would be a perfect fit there. But let's just say for argument purposes, we couldn't find anyone to lease it. It, it could transition its way back to a tenant, you know, tenant area, tenant space. And then when the retail market picks back up again, it could then flip back to potentially, you know, a leasable, a leasable space. We had proposed putting a small little market in there for, for the tenants. You know, one could see that as being a perfect fit for that. Somebody walking from, you know, that neighborhood, you know, grabbing a water or something as they walk into town or, you know. I, I think, I think. There's a lot of creative people that we have in our team that can come up with, you know, certain. Pieces to the puzzle that would, would, could, could fit there perfectly. It's not a huge space. It's, it's not, it's not a big space. And, and so I think you can get creative in a smaller space. As I think one of the commissioners mentioned, that more so than a big space. So I, it would be great, it'd be great for us to be able, and I want Alex to comment on this as well. But it'd be great for us to have that opportunity or the flexibility, I guess, to, to pursue it.
I, I would agree with that, Brian. Whether, whether we do it ourselves, you know, and have amenities there for the, for the. Tenants in the building or, you know, we leased it out to some sort of mini mart or some sort for, for the surrounding neighborhood. That was what our initial plan was. A convenience for the people in the building and the, and the surrounding buildings and homes.
Christopher Colo.
So I'll, I'll thank you both for that, you know. In fact, before this meeting tonight, I walked my son up to the corner market and bought him a little ice cream. To calm him down so I can have some peace in the house while we did this. I feel bad for my wife for hopping him up on sugar, but I, it's nice, I can walk to it. And so you're providing a benefit to your neighbors, to your tenants. So with that being said, I feel like we have a compromise here that allows you to. Provide in that space what you would like, gives us, you know, kind of gives us back a little bit what we're looking for. So I would like to make a motion that we accept this on first reading with additions of the modifications to the. Entrance and exit as discussed and changing this commercials, that space to the commercial. Waiving the required parking spots.
We have a motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. All right, discussion. Commissioner Colo.
I just want to add, you know, Mr. Howard and your client, thank you for coming to us with such, you know, there's a lot of cool things in this. Particularly that green roof and, you know, Mr. Howard, if you're developing other developments in this city. I mean, that's a real buy-in for the residents and the community, you know, the fact that you're taking all this water out of the storm system at one time. It's going to greatly impact and benefit all the neighbors and all the community. And you did that voluntarily. That wasn't asked of you. You didn't come, you know, you didn't go to planning and told you must provide that. One problem I've had approving PUDs is a lack of community benefits. And you came to us with a clear and established community benefit right off the bat. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think we're, we're inching towards, at least here in first reading, a good resolution that gives some options to meet the needs of what, you know, the community is looking for. As well as, you know, get a project on board that. Takes an area and fits with the theme of the area down there. We've already seen several residential areas pop up. And hopefully be an example, at least from an environmental point of view, you know, of, you know, if you, if you put your mind to it and you, you get the right architectural spirit behind it. You can do amazing things to, to provide a benefit. And I think in some way too, that's going to be important to your tenants, the people that are conscious. That choose to want to have a lifestyle and a mission in life that, you know, everything they do matters. They recycle, they compost, they do whatever. Now they can live in a building that, you know, contributes a heck of a lot less water. To the store management system, which is good for a lot of reasons, including environmental reasons. So it's a very interesting project indeed. Okay, well, if there's no other discussion, I'll move forward with the vote. I'll call for it. We'll start with Commissioner Dubbuck.
Yes.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Perush.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Gentlemen, and we appreciate the time tonight. I know you've gone through a number of reviews of planning and with this commission. And so, you know, you know, we're grateful for you being open and honest with us and telling us your plans. So thank you and.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care. All right, this brings us to number 11 on our agenda tonight, which is the Centennial Commons Park Project. First item is the scope of project and funding. And Mr. Brake, I'm going to hand this over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fournier and City Commission. We have these two agenda items for your consideration. This first one to discuss the Centennial Commons Park Project. We're, we're looking at this from a very broad view. This, this project's been in the discussion and careful planning for, for several years now. And the, the last leg of the Royal Oak Civic Center project, as we've completed the 11 mile road garage, the city hall, the police station. And now we're looking at the park project. Early on, there was a dollar amount that was set aside, a placeholder budget. To take into consideration the, the costs associated with the projects. And over the, the last eight to 10 months, there's been a very concentrated discussion about the, the project. And the, the, our construction manager identified that there was a possibility. That of trying to make all the amenities possible in the project. So the thought was to bid out the, the, the construction work into different buckets, if you will. And they delineated that between a base budget and two alternates. And through the, the course of the discussion, it became evident that this placeholder budget did not match up. The, the actual true cost based on cost escalations that have occurred as a result of COVID. And other delays that have caused where the. Because of whether it's labor shortage or cost of materials. And, and, and again, back to the concept of the cost escalation that, that happened. So the discussion was brought back to the DDA, who has been a supportive partner in this endeavor. So the, the DDA has allocated certain funds dedicated towards the park project. They also set aside 1.5 million for the library terrace. And when it became evident of what the, the true costs were associated with this. Has revisited the, the topic in February. Related to bringing about the, the funds needed to shore up the, the base bid. And to tackle the, one of the alternates, which is the, the water feature. So the DDA board had two meetings and allocated additional amounts. But it was on the premise that the city would be building the, the water feature. So trying to, to, to put this in where it's understandable, the amount of information, because we've been dealing with a lot of numbers. From the onset and as these bids come in from different trades and, and really boiling this down to simple decision-making components. So what I'm presenting to you in this agenda item is really two basic concepts. Is number one, accepting the, the DDAs. An additional amount to leverage this water feature. Which we would be looking at additional 698,000. What I'm proposing to include that in the upcoming capital improvement program. So this, this construction project will, will carry over the period of two different fiscal years. So when we get to that part of the project, the, the construction, it'll be into this, this next fiscal year. So in, in essence, we would be budgeting this, this additional amount. Secondarily, establishing a true budget for the project. The construction manager has, has viewed all the different elements. And as we look at this, the underground improvements, there is the chance that. Things will arise, as was mentioned in the previous agenda item of a high water table. And there are known elements that when the construction of the 11 mile parking garage. That there were certain contingencies because of that underground construction. So the, the construction manager is advising us that we have an increased contingency amount. So we don't keep coming back for, for additional adjustments. So we're, we're, we're raising that, that issue. So there is a part of this in, in, to be upfront, that on the two alternates. The second alternate is unresolved at this point. And, and that was spoken to by one of the speakers this evening is the, the bathroom feature that was included as part of the park design. This does not suggest that there will not be one, but rather to set that aside and to. Either fundraise, look at leveraging additional dollars, right sizing the facility. There, there's any number of possibilities to include that. So the, the costs that are included in the project do include a water and sewer connection. That would be at the park, so there would be space set aside within the park that, that such a building could be constructed. What was presented by the, the designer is a, essentially a, a single unisex bathroom. And for the amount of activity that's going on in the park, honestly, it may not be sufficient. So I don't want to get too hung up on those details, but we do have a plan for that. The other alternative idea that was discussed at the DDA board is to look at building a, a larger restroom facility. Closer to the farmer's market. It, it does move that away from the, the water feature, but I, I don't want to get too bogged down on that, but it, but it's something that we do need to address. Uh, but the, the costs, uh, appear to be prohibitive to, uh, we would be looking at an additional, um, uh, 288,000 for one, one unisex bathroom. So we're, we're, we're setting that aside. But we do have the elements for the, um, the, uh, like I said, the water and sewer connection. I, I would suggest this, that we continue the, the conversation to figure out what is the proper configuration of the restroom? What would be the sufficient size? Um, then, then once, once that element is determined, then go back through and, and construct that into the second year. Based on, uh, the, the wording of these bids, um, and here's the, the other time element that we're, we're up against. The, the bids were let in mid-November and were due back in December. And the dollar amounts that the vendors provided guaranteed, uh, a quote through mid-May. Here, excuse me, mid-March, mid-March. So we're, we're just a, a week away that these bids will, will expire. It's, it's important to solidify those, those bids, uh, so we can lock in the prices, uh, because there are price of materials such as steel that are in flux right now. And we could be looking at increased steel costs if, if we forgo any of these other elements. So, uh, again, bringing to you a rather complex sort of issue. And from a broader 30,000 foot view, uh, is the purpose of this agenda item. The following agenda item that will be introduced by, uh, Mr. Todd Fenton will talk about the award of the, of the specific trades. Now the contractors for, for each element of the projects. We do have, uh, Mr. Chris Becker from Plant Marine Cressa. Who is our construction advisor, uh, is, uh, available to answer any questions about how did we get here? Why did this end up the way that it did? Um, and, and go from there. So, but, uh, we've discussed this at, at length and from a staff level and before the DDA. And they're very committed to the project and very excited about it. And there were, were some side elements that was discussed as well. And you'd see my staff report to bring up, uh, a public relations campaign that they came, there was a staff initiated recommendation. It did not come from the DDA. Additionally, the, the DDA was looking at having a greater voice in the partnership and they suggested to them that once we get done with the park project, there will be ongoing discussion about maintenance. And so to, uh, have them as a partner. Um, so there, there's many different elements to the, the, the dynamics of this project. And so trying to, to bring this to you in a neat package, how we can move this forward, how we can get this completed. So it does live up to its name that it's a centennial park, not centennial plus one, uh, that we want to complete this by this fall. So I present, uh, recommending to you a resolution that, uh, authorizes the alternative number one in the dollar amount of the 698, which includes a contingency amount. Then secondarily establishes the budget at the 5.4 million. So I'm hoping I'm giving a good broad brush overview. And, uh, we're happy to entertain any questions about my memorandum or bring Mr. Becker on to talk very specific about the, the construction and, um, um, how we can make this project happen.
All right. Where do we start the questions? Anybody have question? I see Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, I do have questions about how we got here and how this ended up the way it did. Um, I feel pretty frustrated about this. It was a year ago that we approved this design, a year that we've been having COVID construction on the city hall and the police station, a year that we could have made changes to any of those, presumably the costs were also raised for those. And yet we seem to have come through those without any, uh, any of these cost overruns. And this is a huge overrun. Um, and I, I don't want to sacrifice the things that we had designed for this park. And I, I feel frustrated that only at the very end with weeks to go before we have to submit these, we have to agree to these bids, or we find it out that we, we don't have the money for the things that we asked for. So I, I am, I would like to know, I think those, those broad questions, how exactly did we end up where we are today?
Okay. And, and to answer that, a- a- again, focus on, and determine use as placeholder budget. So the, the dollar amount came first, then the design. So it, it's not a matter of, you know, who's at fault or, or what happened, um, you know, this kind of the evolution over time that, uh, un- unfortunately we, we didn't have the, the sufficient amount. This is the most visible component that people have been waiting for. Sure, the, the city hall is, it's a beautiful facility, uh, and those individuals that, that come here to pay their taxes or attend a meeting. But the park by far will get the highest use out of the, the, the different elements that we have here. So I, I think it's more important to focus on what we've done rather than what could have happened. And what, what I mean by that is that the dollar amount gap was much, much larger. And we looked at value engineering where we looked at whether it's, um, uh, different smalls sort of granular sort of components, uh, different, uh, hardscape elements. Design where we could reduce that, that cost that, that's out of there. Number two, where, where I'm looking at is a strategy of leveraging funds. Where can we look at, at additional partners? Um, and that's where we brought the DDA into the conversation. A- additionally, I would like to explore other partners who potentially could underwrite the, the restroom facility. And perhaps, uh, a private sector partner yet to be named or determined. Or, or maybe collectively through an, an entity. I think Commissioner Macy, you, you do raise a good point. And we, we have to be accountable for the dollars and I'm not dismissing that. I can tell you the, the time that I've been here, it's, it's, I'm inheriting this, this number that's been given to me. But, you know, it's, we can, uh, bring Mr. Becker on, online and he can speak to some of the kind of nuances that have occurred during the, this conversation and, and, you know, where we have kind of these pieces of the puzzle. We have to, to figure that out. So, um, with that, uh, I know Chris is on, uh, joining us and, and I'll let him jump in and and add his narrative.
Mr. Becker.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and Paul. Thank you. Um, I, I, I gave the same information to the DDA. They had exactly the same question. How did we, how did we get to this point? And it's kind of a three-point item. Number one, we, we knew we had a budget. We brought in MKSK. And, uh, ultimately the park got designed over the budget. MKSK in their contract had, had some estimating and they gave us some estimates that were kind of showing that they were on budget with what they were doing. But one of the, the, the unfortunate things that MKSCA did is they didn't, they didn't take the local, local labor market into account. And, and I'll explain it as easy as I can. As we know, we have over 90% union contractors on all the work we're doing here in Royal Oak, which, which is good. We have very good contractors, the people that we want out there. But that labor is also 10 to 12% higher. And you take that into, uh, over the entire park and it, it's a considerable amount of money that, um, that it was higher. The, the third item is, um, yeah, we went through COVID. They, they had some estimates, but when we came out with the estimate on the construction documents, we had the CM do the estimate and we, we knew we were over budget and we were, we weren't a million dollars over budget. We were $2 million over budget. And so we worked really together as a group to value engineer and how could we make this happen? And one of the things that we did, and, and that's why we bid it in eh, with a base bid of everything except for the water feature and the restrooms. And then we had a third alternate where we, the canopy was like, we, we, we do, uh, reduced it in size by 20%. The other, the, the, the next item is when we bid the job, um, there's a, the, the, the COVID, one thing COVID did to us is it pushed a lot of construction from night, from the two, uh, 2020 to 2021. And so what we've seen is prices go up due to that, because contractors fill their, they fill their plate. And, and then, you know, they take on more work and usually the price goes up a little bit when they take on more work. And that, and that's some of the things that we've seen. We, after we took the bids, we, we went through some more value engineering. How can we get this closer? How can we get this closer? And, and we got down to that, that base bid on the park of roughly being a half million over. And we knew that we couldn't cut anything else without, w- w- we cut some fat. We cut some muscle, but we were gonna, if we had to get lower than a million dollars over, we're gonna cut bone. We're gonna tuck, cut things that you didn't want out of the park. And, and so that's what got us to where we're at right now, um, is, is those things that, you know, we really took a hard look at everything. And then, then of course, when we went to the DDA, they were pretty adamant on, on having the water feature eh, of which is, is a great part of the park. But, um, the restrooms, quite frankly, for the small amount of restrooms that you get there, $288,000, it's, it's a very expensive restroom. Now there's some high, you know, there's some ways to value inju- engineer a little bit out of it, but not enough to bring it down a lot. And there may be options for the city and how you want to go about restrooms, um, obviously courting with, coordinating with farmer's market potentially. But, but, but those are really, you know, it's a really a three-pronged thing. I, we, we really designed over what the original budget was. Then, then an estimate was done that made it look like we were there, but it really didn't have the, the right labor market for what we use. And then COVID, that, that it's really hard to judge the impacts of, of the COVID that we had. And those are the things that really hit us. I hope that answers your question.
See, uh, Commissioner Dubak and then Commissioner Colo and then Commissioner Douglas.
Mayor, um, a couple of points, and then I have a, a couple of questions from Mr. Becker. Um, first, like, we are not over budget because we have not started construction or a project. We, we are not over budget because we haven't spent a penny yet. We found out that our design, uh, it came in at a cost more than we budgeted. Uh, so we have to make decisions now, which is what we're doing, which is very similar to what we had for the, uh, the police station in city hall. Um, you know, Chief O'Donoghue didn't get to have, you know, his gold-plated toilet in his bathroom. And we had to roll back some of those things. No, but for real, there were design elements and, and those that, that added to costs that we had to roll back before we actually greenlit the project. So this, this is not a place we, we haven't been. And I'm disappointed, everything we designed has not fallen within our cost target. But we're not over budget and we have not overrun because we haven't spent a penny yet. I can say as a, a member of the downtown park planning task force, we kind of went back and forth on bathrooms specifically because it was a cost driver and we were not a hundred percent on the use of space. So, uh, you know, through public comment and conversation, we decided that it would be ideal state to have one. But it was very much a nice to have, not a must-have. And if we have to move forward with, with this park without it for now, I'm completely comfortable with that because that was, we entertained designs that didn't have it in the first place. Um, particularly given the, the incredible cost that we're seeing for what is, and we're not talking about a a facility that's going to meet our need if we have a public function in the park. We're talking about like a, a unisex bathroom or, or a single stall, you know, female, uh, bathroom situation. We're not talking about if, you know, arts beats needs, uh, we're having a main stage there or something, or even if we just have our, uh, you know, holiday tree lighting there, we're still gonna have to bring in porta potties even with this, uh, facility. This is just kind of for daily use. Nice to have, convenient, um, to complement the, um, the zero debt fountain, uh, splash pad. So, I, I would not want to hold this entire project based on the bathroom. I'm very glad the DDA is stepping up to help with these costs. It's, I think a hundred percent the right decision. I want to be clear, that's not philanthropy. This kind of downtown infrastructure investment is literally why the DDA exists. And they do have resources and lots of demand on those resources. They have to make decisions of, of how to direct them. This is clearly something we've all agreed on as a priority for our city. So I understand they're saying we need that water feature. That's something that was kind of the, the gem in this whole thing from the beginning. So I totally agree with that decision. I'm glad they're stepping up and backing up the plan that we all laid out so many years ago. I do, I, I'm wondering, so in addition to COVID, kind of pushing construction schedules, uh, you know, forward and now creating this demand that's, that's driven costs. Do safety precautions on sites, are those also driving costs? Is that slowing construction? Is it, is it creating? You're keeping people safe? Is it, is it basically creating inefficiencies? It's also driving costs?
It, it does. Commissioner Dubak, it, it does. It's not so much slowing things as we found out getting through COVID. But you, you have to follow certain protocols and you have to do certain things. And you gotta have the means of sanitizing and going about it. So, um, the things that slow construction is when someone actually gets COVID on site. That's, that's the bad part. And I don't know how you plan for that. You know, you, you continue to do your sanitary things and make people have masks. And trust me, it's it's a, it's a daily thing that you have to police to make sure people are wearing masks. Because it comes on and off and on and off with construction workers, but, um, it does raise a price. Yeah. Yes, sir.
As far as the element, the design engineering, you know, I want to make sure that if there's things we have to delay to get the dollars, great. I want to make sure, but I want to make sure that we're doing this right and we are fulfilling our promise to residents. Cause this is, because I've been the gem of this entire civic center development since we, since it was just a concept at a, a planning session 70 years ago. So are those elements, the design engineering, are they things that are going to impact our residents rightful expectation of this park and experience at the park? Or are they things where we just found ways to do what we plan to do less expensive?
We're gonna do what you want. Some walkways aren't as wide as they were before. There's, there's in some cases a little less planting. We, we use some other means of, of drainage to make things, uh, better. But we're not lessening the park. And that, and that's what I wanted to say. We couldn't, we couldn't go any farther because we were gonna cut bone. We, we would have cut the things that you wanted in your park. Um, and you're gonna see, you, you're still gonna love it. It's got some narrower walkways, but not, not that much narrower. You had more colored concrete before. One of the big things is there was multiple types of concrete which drove the price up. So you still have concrete, just not as many colors. And there are some variations in it, but not as much as originally planned.
On narrower, uh, walkways means nor- more grass, right?
That's what you get. Yes, sir.
Silver lining there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Polo. And then, Mr. Douglas and Commissioner Purush.
So I, I just want to circle back to Commissioner Macy's question really quick because I, I don't think we quite have an answer here. And it is, um, looking at this. And I've watched the DDA meetings over the last couple of months and I, I agree with Commissioner Dubak. I, I do appreciate their contribution and their role in keeping the downtown vibrant. One thing I'm not getting though is how we got here. And I, I heard we talked about MKSK and how they didn't have the right projections in the labor and that threw it off. Who's checking MKSK's work? I mean, this board are not construction managers. Who, who was out there making sure that MKSK was giving us something that was realistic and not selling us, um, something that just was not going to happen? So I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, yes, MKSK may have had unrealistic expectations. But who was setting our expectations for their expectations?
That's a very good question. When they came out with their estimates. Um, when they came out with their estimates. We didn't see their labor units. We saw the labor that they thought, you know, that they had in it and not the rates. And the labor looked right for it. Um, and their estimates came in on budget. And that's why when we brought the CM in to do estimates on the documents, when they developed them further. That's when we saw we had a problem. So, um. In in some ways, in some ways, Plant, Moran, Cressa did, but everything we saw from them looked like we were doing well. Quite frankly, when you look at the end product. You can see, you know, much more easily why why it was that much higher. As they develop through documents, doc, the the details get more, um. Um, well, it gets more detailed and you got more information to work with. Early on, we didn't have it. Um, and uh, it it was, it got overdesigned. I, I gotta admit, I I looked at certain things, but I did not see something out of the ordinary. And when we got the uh CM on board and taking a look at it, that's when we could really see what, where the pricing was that much higher.
Okay, well, uh unfortunately, we're at a point now where there's no. We can only learn from the past, I suppose. Um, moving forward, I'm not, um. You know, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar toilet is not beneficial to anyone. Um, you could build a house with five toilets in it for about that cost. So it's, it's just, it's it's not something I would support right now, but I'm heavily in favor of adding. A restroom facility to this park, if it's a three-seater residence room, if it's something. Um, I hope that as we move forward from tonight, we're looking on. Very aggressively how to add that in the near future. Um, y- you know, we have a water feature and we're gonna have wet people. Um, who will need that relief. Walking over to the farmer's market is too far, in my opinion. I certainly don't want trucks into the library, as much as I love people going into our library. Uh, wet and books don't really combine all that well. Um, it's just, it's amenity that was promised to the public, as was asked for. Um, so I hope that we, um. We are adding the uh, the electrical and the plumbing. Right now, we're adding the the bones for that. I hope that, uh, Mr. Break, we keep on moving forward pretty fast. Uh, this park won't be completed until the fall anyway, so the water feature won't be on. So we at least get a year reprieve with that. I hope by the next, uh, when we're using this water feature on a regular basis, um, it's something we have up and going. That's all I have.
Just wanna remind everyone too, I mean. You know, this is why we have these check gates, and and this is why the process has been established where. We have estimates that are very just thrown up. I mean, anyone that's ever built a house, I know Commissioner Macy, you put an addition on your house. Um, we did a lot of work on our, on our house to get it up to to speed with the new HVAC and and build out a little bit for our growing family. And you have an architect and the architect goes through and does their best to kinda design your budget. Uh, and then once you get bids, I mean, you're at the mercy of the market. And, you know, I had bids that were, you know, really high and and some, you know, that were um too low. Uh, didn't make sense, and, you know, we went through the process and we had to do some value engineering. I mean, this is a process, an ancient process that that, you know. Uh, every, you know, buying organization of facilities has to go through. Um, you know, so I think that we can probably all try to figure out, how did we get here? Well, well, we're here because we deliberately. You know, are going through the process of checks and balances and making sure that, you know, we're um, we're we're working with what we. Want to offer as far as a park, but doing our best in in the things we can't control, which are the cost of things. And remember, quite frankly, you know, we should have been here two years ago. We had frivolous lawsuits that pushed this off, that that delayed uh the project, which added to the, I mean, construction costs have been going up. Year over year over year. We see that in our concrete prices for our streets. Um, and this is another contributing factor too. So it's been a journey. It's something that we definitely can celebrate. We're finding resolutions, which like Commissioner Dubac said. Um, we did with every building and project we've done. Um, so, you know, I don't wanna harp too bad. I mean, yes, it's a, it's a little bit of a surprise. It's a little bit higher than maybe we expected. Uh, given our our um placeholders in the past. Uh, but the good, most important thing is, is we're going through it now. We haven't spent a dollar. Uh, and that we have some options ahead of us, and that, you know, we don't thrift and we make sure that we. We move forward with a remarkable community asset that's going to be here for generations, where. People are gonna bond and love and share and and, you know, as a testament to, you know, the type of community that we are. And so, um, I I'm happy that, you know, we got a good team here that isn't throwing their hands up in the air, but that they're. Putting forward solutions for us to consider, which inevitably is, is always the case when you go through these long drawn-out construction projects, so. Um, comments uh made are are absolutely, you know, appropriate. We gotta get to the bottom of why things change. But the good news is, is why the process is in place, you know, so we can evaluate those changes and decide what we do moving forward. Um, and I, with you, Commissioner Colo, I can't in good conscience, uh, even if it is the most remarkable toilet in the world. Um, you know, I I, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a toilet, nope. I'm gonna tell you that right now. They won't make some motion to support that. We can go back to the drawing board on that one. There probably is a need for some changing space and some washroom space. Commissioner Dubac said, you know, when we have an event or we're using it for for more people to come. For whatever it may be, you know, we can import some uh nice classy restroom facilities in there. Uh, but, you know, a singular toilet isn't gonna do, do a whole lot uh at this point, in my opinion, so. Um, we'll take a look and 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 see what that looks like down the road. Uh, but, you know, we gotta regroup on that one, because that, that was a little bit of a shock to me. All the other stuff, you know, par for the course, that one seemed pretty pricey and and maybe something that no one really had on their radar for a toilet. Okay, uh, I had Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. And and this, what I'm gonna say is probably moot in terms of timing, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, and Commissioners Dubac and Perush can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems, because I too serve on the downtown park task force. And it seems to me that in our initial, when we, when we first settled on a design. The idea of the library terrace was a secondary uh feature. Um, and if there's something we were gonna do later, that would be with it. Well. The DDA very quickly stepped up and said, we'll pay for the library terrace, which was great. Until today, when we hear that the DDA is adamant about the water feature and. Uh, it, is it too late to pivot and to um uh? Put off the library terrace for a later time and then have those funds available for the water feature? Mr. Becker, I.
That, that's one that I I don't know that I can really respond to. I've been really moving forward per the direction of. The library terrace was gonna be phased to, they brought the one point five million dollars in. And and therefore, we're building it all at the same time. I don't. Commissioner Douglas, I I actually don't know how to respond to that, because that's a DDA direction and uh. Um, could it go that way? Well, sure, but they're the ones adding the funding and. And so they, their uh, their direction was, hey, they would pay the additional money for. Um, the meeting I was in, they'd pay the additional money for the base contract. A- as long as the city pursued the water feature.
And I'm sorry, it really, Mr. I, Mr. Becker, it's really a question really more for for Mr. Break. And I realize that, I mean, to pivot at this point, the DDA board would have to move and to reappoint, you know, reallocate its money. At which point, all of our bids would have expired. Um, oh, I I do know that this is moot, but I don't wanna let the the concept go um on set. So, um, and then my second question is, um, it it seems to me, I mean, common sense tells us, and Commissioner Dubac said this as well. People are eager to see this park. I mean, this is really the jewel of the whole civic center process. So I guess I'd like to know, Mr. Break, why anyone thinks a public relations campaign is necessary?
Well, uh, Commissioner Douglas, that's a very good question. So that is a recommendation that I made that. It's like, said in the beginning of my comments. It was not something that the DDA board asked for. But nevertheless, uh, this is a complex topic in the sequence of events. And um, being truthful, it's, I, I'm coming in the eleventh hour into this conversation, so. Uh, I missed the discussion of when the the DDA was contemplating the, the the amount for the the terrace. Um, this, uh, these are funds that we do already have set aside. It's in the city manager's budget. And I see this as an opportune time that we need to engage into this conversation and that we discuss the value. Uh, there could even be a fundraising component to lay out that, to uh, um, to assist, uh, perhaps the the community foundation. We haven't set the the parameters of what exactly that firm will do. Um, but this is a suggestion that I made, um, and I stand by my recommendation. Um, that the city has previously used a uh public relations firm. Um, in the the grand scheme of things of what we're spending the totality, uh, it's a pretty small percentage. Um, but if it's something that the commission um wishes not to include in here, it's it's not a deal breaker for the DDA.
And and I will say that the DDA or the the document we've received says that the DDA asks that. Um, the city issue a request for proposals for the, for public relations. I, I assume you mean they're not just gonna issue a request for proposals, but the, the DDA is asking the city fund. A public relations campaign.
That, that is correct, but the the directing the consultant to um, uh, the the ownership and the 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 client is the city, not the DDA. So that, that's something that's within our purview, uh, to to carrying out what goals that we would like to see. So it's not a, to go back to the DDA and make sure that they concur. It, it was really meant as a package deal that was presented to the DDA. The DDA, in their initial deliberations, they were asking for a higher dollar amount. Uh, to come from the city. And uh, my thought process was to facilitate more of a partnership, rather than getting hung up with. Who's going to spend what dollar amount, and and so. Uh, it appeared to be logical and the presentation was ma- made to the DDA. Shore up the the base bid project, so we can even begin the discussion on the the water feature. So, um, uh, being perfectly honest, not knowing the, I guess, the secondary desire. Uh, of the of the library terrace, you know, not not knowing that that part of the history, it's, I, I lack that knowledge going into that conversation. So, uh, of of course, it's uh, having that hindsight, we probably would have approached that differently. But nevertheless, here we are. So part, part of the discussion that I'm bringing to you is that. This isn't all said and done. We need to take care of, so we can meet this March fifteenth deadline, so we can lock in these prices. So we're not talking about an even higher cost. But to continue that conversation, you know, we do have, that is included in here. Is extending the utilities for a bathroom facility. We just don't know what the size of that is at this point. And what would meet that need? Do we look for something that's, that meets it in the middle? Uh, a little bit higher cost, but we have a much, much greater utility. Um, you know, uh, we could get really bogged down in in that conversation. Uh, but I I think there's a way of accomplishing that, and and it's a matter of. Of, you know, working with different partners and see what sort of ways that we can leverage additional support. But but point well taken at the beginning of the conversation.
And then, just the last thing, uh, do you envision, and I I understand that this is a very preliminary, but do you envision? That public relations campaign perhaps supporting the city's own centennial celebration and the communications around it?
Absolutely, yes. It would complement that that function.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Bruce.
Um, just a couple of things, back to the restroom discussion. Um, Commissioners Douglas and Dubac can correct me if my recollection is incorrect, but. Um, my recollection of the discussion about the restroom facility, because it wasn't in the original. Um, uh, very schematic um drawings of the of the park initially. The concern was, if we add a restroom facility. Um, the the park is only two acres, and given the other components that are in there that were very important to. Um, the, 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 the task force, as well as the public engagement. Information that we received in the public engagement process. If we were gonna have anything much larger than just a one-stall unisex bathroom, it would really negatively impact. Other features of the park, which we felt, which were very, very important. Whether it be the area around the memorial. Or the area for more children's play area, which is down closer to Third Street. Or the area where we have this huge maple tree, which is hopefully going to stay at the corner of Third and Williams. Um, there isn't a whole lot of area to put a larger restroom facility. And so I think that's why the pet, the task force said, if you're going to do it, if we're gonna do a recommendation of a restroom facility, let's just keep it to one. One, one stall or one place where a mom or dad can tuck in with a kid and change out of wet clothes. Um, in the scheme of things, given the type of activities that that is gonna take place in the downtown area, especially once the park is open. That might be very, much, much, much too small. Um, and and we probably recognize that once the park is open. Um, and so we might be looking at a larger facility, but to my mind. That can't be in the park, or you're gonna lose too much else that you really want to stay there. Uh, whether it's a large green space or some of the other smaller amenities that are kind of tucked in the corners. And so perhaps the best thing to do is to look more at a location closer to the farmer's market, or an expansion of the farmer's market. Which someone suggested a while ago, with restroom facilities. Um, as opposed to putting a great big one that would be adequate for the type of demand we might have in the park itself, because that park is just, it's too small. Um, the other point that I wanna make is I think there has been a transition. In the way the DDA has approached this project over the three or four-year period that it's been going on. Uh, recall that initially, we thought that five million dollars allocated from the DDA, that's paying for the park, would be more than enough. Um, but that was, that was more than three years ago, and a lot of things have changed in those three years. Um, not only the whole COVID thing, but but just the price of of. Of um, labor and materials is on way. If you've priced a two-by-four lately, you know how. The price of wood and basic materials for all kinds of buildings are are way up. Um, and then there was the the more emphasis away from just in the park, but also to including. Uh, the library terrace, which was not in the original idea, uh, which is not in the original concept of the design. It was area from the existing library terrace to Third Street, not including the other terrace. So I think the library terrace. Um, is a, is a kind of a smoking gun here that we're kind of ignoring. I think it's, that's added a lot of cost to the project that we don't recognize. It's very important to the DDA that it be included, that this all be done all at once. And I can understand that. I think they're, I think they're correct in that regard. Um, but I think they shifted away from just focusing on the park. Hookring itself to include that library terrace over this three-year period. And that really had an impact on the cost that we're looking at today.
And I'll, I'll just add to what Commissioner Perush was saying, you know, in the first part of her, her dialogue, you know. Um, and may- maybe even an alternative solution is, you know, I'll just throw it out there, not to debate it, but food for thought. I mean, if the real concern is, is like. People changing for the splash pad or, you know, that's all seasonal. So maybe you get the cost down significantly if you put like a seasonal shelter, you know, toilet there, and then in the winter time. You don't have that sort of uh water feature or traffic. You know, you're using up a lot less space and, you know, it keeps the cost down significantly, and frankly, it serves the purpose of ninety-five percent of the people that would. Would mostly use it. So, you know, there's things we have to explore. Um, so it sounds like we're, we're kind of aligned on, you know, this one feature, um, but uh. You know, obviously, we gotta buy ourselves a little bit of rethink on it. Um, as well. I see Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Colo.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Perush has hit on it, that it, this, the library terrace, which seems such a big, it's a one point five million dollar cost. Which is exactly what we seem to be over, and is suddenly an integral part of this plan, which I don't quite understand why that is the case. So I I wish we had time to go back to the DDA and say, can we swap the order of these things? Um, but it seems, seems like we don't. I've never been a huge fan of the library terrace. I don't love the design of those. Uh, of the shelter covers that are actually shaped like a funnel. Um, so to me, it would be great if we could push that off. Um, but again, doesn't seem like we have time, and I agree that the water feature is a critical piece of what we're doing here. Uh, I just wanna say about the restrooms, I agree pretty much with what everyone has said here. But I also, as a mom with three kids, I'm telling you, it's gonna be problematic for, when the water feature is there and there's nowhere to to put your kids with the library. And the library is very concerned. The library board has talked at many meetings. And the library is very concerned. The library board has talked at many meetings about the concern that we have that there's going to be a stream of wet kids coming in and out of the library because it's family friendly and it's right there. So it's it does seem to be a problem. I agree with the mayor to say about the seasonal nature of this. And I think part of what we can benefit from that is that I I mean, I don't think that the water feature is going to be in place this summer. So we almost have some time before we need to worry about wet bodies going into a nearby building to get that to get some other restroom facility up. So I'm thrilled about where we are, but I agree with fellow commissioners that we need to be solution oriented and that this the water feature is a critical part of what will make this such a great downtown park. I'm excited about the park. I wish we didn't have to make the decision this way. I would love to swap out the library terrace. My understanding is that the DDA will wow that. But maybe I'm wrong. I wish we had time to go find out.
Mr. Colo.
Thank you for swearing. So just a a couple of things to kind of recap some of my thoughts here. One, I am beyond excited for this. I mean, how cool is this? This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. We're about to vote on a downtown park. Who gets to knock down two acres and have this amazing green space? I mean, this is a generational thing. So we are as a community, so lucky to have this and it's a gift to the future. So I'm I'm beyond excited that we are looking forward to the future right now. There are a lot of things, a lot of questions we've gone back and forth on. I think at the end of the day, we have a couple of days to decide on these bids and these bids will go up the day they expire. That is without a doubt, they will go up. So I am, uh, maybe it's not everything we thought it was going to be. Maybe it's everything we want. I agree with Commissioner Macy. I actually was never a big fan of the spirals on the library terrace, but I am a fan of doing the library terrace because that is a great place to congregate and a nice way to include the library in this entire design. And I'm excited to see what we come up with in the future, but we're kind of troubleshooting going back and forth on something we can't solve tonight. So that being said, I move that we pass a resolution presented by Mr. Brick.
Motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Say goodbye Commissioner Hunt. All right, discussion.
Okay, just to be sure, my computer here just froze for a second. I want to make sure that the recommendation doesn't have. When we say Commissioner Colo, what's presented by Mr. Break, you're talking about what's in the letter in terms of the be it resolved, authorize the funding of six ninety-eight per alternate one, correct?
Sure. And the further resolved.
And the further be resolved. Okay, all right, good. All right, um, discussion on this. All right, we'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Prush.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, everyone, we're getting closer to Centennial Commons and our hundred year anniversary as a city. We're going to have an awesome park. We'll be able to, you know, exit COVID here, hopefully in the and by the time this park's done and invite all our friends from surrounding communities to come and join us and celebrate something pretty amazing. We're bringing a lot of green space and recreational space to an already vibrant downtown. This will be good for no matter what your address is in Royal Oak. This is going to be an amazing feature that not only you'd be proud of, but you know, people of all ages will enjoy. So this is exciting stuff. Lot of planning, a lot of effort in the process here. And I want to thank Mr. Becker, Mr. Fenton, Mr. Break and all those who worked diligently to to help deliver, you know, this this complicated project that encompasses so many moving parts. And now we're finishing up the last part, which is this beautiful park that we've all looked forward to. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, second part, contracts. Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city.
Shifting around on me.
Consistent with the last resolution that was just approved, establishing the new park budget at five point four million dollars, we're confident in bringing this resolution for you, which is recommending awards for seven different trade bid packages. Those are earthwork, concrete, monument relocation, landscaping, general trades, metal fabrications and electrical. And with these bids, all of them are being made on the awarded bidders being the lowest qualified bids for all of these as well. As Paul had said in his last, we're awarding the alternate of the water feature, but not the bathroom, but we are allocating a fifty thousand dollar budgetary item so that we can provide the infrastructure for a restroom in the facility in the future should proceed to move forward with that. So with that, I don't have any other anything else to say with regard to these bids. If you want to get into the individual bids again, Chris and I can walk you through these bid packages.
Any questions for Todd or Chris? Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you. Mr. Fenton, I know you stated that the bids that are being recommended are the lowest bids that were submitted. I want to make certain that they are are also of quality work and quality service that will be provided. It's not just a low bid that we're looking for.
Yes, and and that's part of our bid review process, working with Plant, Moran, Cressa, and then working with our construction manager to make sure that all of these bidders have adequately provided what we wanted out of the scope of work. In fact, it led to one of the delays in us getting these bids to you before one of our bidders. And it's something that we've seen over COVID. They they pick and choose what they want to bid on and instead of taking the whole thing. Suddenly, a bid that we thought was under budget is now four hundred thousand dollars over budget when you start factoring in the things that they didn't factor in. So we certainly went through a fine tooth comb with these bidders. I'm I was as frustrated to see where the budget was as anyone here and made it very, very clear with Chris and and Colossany O'Brien that we were not going to get change ordered to death on this project. So we're very, very happy that we had adequate coverage on these bids. And now all the scope of work was was adequately covered.
And just on Commissioner Hunt's point here, as far as quality workmanship. I mean, we expect that all the people working on this project go through apprenticeship programs and things of that nature to make sure it's done correctly, right?
I hope you don't mind me stepping in right here. We have some of the best contractors in the area doing the park work. Motor City Electric, probably if not the best one, you know, right up there with the best electricians. Blaze Contracting, you know, very, very good, high quality, and and they do have those training programs that you you're talking about, Mayor. Yeah, we've got good contractors on the job that MH Cannon, the landscape, some of the some of the bigger contracts that we have out there are the are the better contractors. And you'll see from the results that we get with these guys. We have good contractors. They they came in, they 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 worked with us to get the numbers where we're at. So, yeah, you'll be happy with these guys and they, uh, some of them, some of them have already worked. Motor City's been working out here. And Cannon's done work out here also, so. We're good.
Any other questions? All right, well, we have a resolution in front of us. Commissioner Prush.
This is not really germane to the actual issue right in front of us, but I don't know about an other appropriate place to ask the question. We see the fencing around the area now, but we don't see a whole lot of activity in terms of demolition activity. Is that all going on inside? Or are we waiting until we're finished with this stuff tonight before any any more visual visual activity actually occurs in terms of the demolition?
Yeah, the abatement is, uh, you gotta make sure I'm on. Yeah, the abaintments going down inside the building and that's what you got to do first. You you really can't demo anything until you get the bad stuff out. And and so they're working inside the building. And if you went in there, you realize it because it kind of looks like bomb went off. And then and then the towers, the towers, the one of the first things you're going to see coming down probably in about two weeks. And there's some some, you know, we 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 have some coordination with AT&T that's still got to happen. But you'll see the tower start coming down. And then and then also near the end of the month, we've got to move that gear. That electrical gear has to move north also. So there'll be bits and pieces and then you'll see it come. And you know, actually, once they start tearing down the building, it'll come down pretty quick.
Yeah.
We got to make it all safe, got to make it all safe first. And you know, sure enough, people walk around that they want the easy access into the library. So they walk around the fence we put up. So just one of those things.
I knew the remediation had to happen first. I mean, that's that's the law. That's just not just the practice. That's a requirement. So but, um, well, that's that sounds good. Sounds like things are moving along. And you're right, as soon as the actual shell of the building starts to come down, it does. It does go very fast.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Fenton, just a quick question as we get ready to approve these contracts. Can you just talk quickly about the timeline that we're going to see, you know, kind of with Commissioner Prush, we should talk about the demolition. When when will we see a park? When when will we see a some this finished product? I we don't need to go through every aspect of it here, but when when you see us, you know, walking in the park.
Well, we'll be moving to put these contractors in their contract starting tomorrow. The buildings will probably be down in April and then you're going to start seeing the site work for the park again shortly thereafter.
Okay.
If I may add, you're really looking at about a November first substantial completion date. All all depends on how those things go in. One of the key contracts is the steel contract for that canopy. You get those guys moving right away.
I I appreciate that. As much as I had tried to lobby the Downtown Park Commission to explode implode the buildings, they refused to. So I guess we just got to watch it come down brick by brick. So that being said, we have approved the funding for this project based on the contractors that we see here. So I'm going to approve a move for approval of this, uh, this contract trade work.
I'm going to motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion on the work. All right, then I will call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Prush.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. So this brings us to the last part of our agenda. Mr. Becker, Mr. Fenton, again, thank you for all your efforts. I know it isn't easy. But you've been throwing some curveballs on this project and you know, you've been able to address them with with great professionalism and candor and honesty and accountability. So we appreciate that as a as a as a governing body here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
All right. So the most exciting thing that everyone loves to talk about is parking. And I see Mr. Fry's here and where where's the chief? He's moving around. Now he's he's moving around again. All right. So I see him here. I can based on that smile, he's excited to present something wonderful tonight. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to to Chief Donahue and Keith Fry to kind of talk about MPS and some of the parking suggestions they have and see where it goes.
Mayor City Commission, actually, we are pretty excited about this. It is parking meters and parking is not the best topic, but we we are excited about this project. On October twenty-sixth, we were, when we gave an update to the city commission, we're instructed to go back and get some public engagement feedback on this project. The restrictions on the gatherings due to the pandemic means meant that traditional town halls weren't really going to be possible. Judy Davids rose to the challenge, I would say. And, you know, really did a fantastic job. And what she did was she prepared a parking system survey and distributed to Royal Oak residence residents using social media, the city's website and our weekly e-blast. More than thirteen hundred Royal Oakers completed the survey. Many of those surveyed indicated that they'd be willing to participate in a more focused discussion using a virtual town hall format. Eighty-two residents ended up participating in this virtual town hall, which took place on January fifth. Those participants were able to immediately react to the presentation by providing feedback using the polling software. The results were instantane- instantly available to everyone in the town hall and you know, finally, we set up a frequently asked questions page that solicited an additional sixty questions or comments from the participants. The initial survey results, the remote town hall and the frequently asked questions page are all available on the city's website. And the summary of those engagement efforts are provided as attachment one. From the feedback we received from the public, our engagement strategy itself was a resounding success. I don't think we've ever had eighty-two people show up at an actual town hall before. And those there were very engaged. So we were really happy with the the strategy Judy developed. And then also those participate who participated and took the time to really understand what we're presenting, were overwhelmingly enthusiastic about this MPS parking system. I believe we had something like seventy-seven percent said they were enthusiastic or very enthusiastic about the MPS system. We found out a lot of interesting things and Judy's on the line. She can get into it. But the one thing is our perception of how bad people think our parking system is, isn't really accurate. People don't have as bad of opinion of it. We we tend to hear people who are the most upset. Most people think it's okay. The people who have used our structures love our structures. We've got big, open parking structures. And, uh, you know, we found that we want to find ways to encourage people to kind of give them a shot because those who use them really love them. But you know, based on on the the feedback we got, the police department has continued to work with MPS to resolve some concerns brought up at the last meeting. And in summary, if approved, MPS is willing to convert six hundred and seventy-three of our nine hundred thirty-five street meters into the smart meters. Additionally, they'll they're willing to take over every surface lot with the exception of P eight, which is the OCC lot, which should be coming offline soon. At this time, we're not recommending converting the parking structures. That's something we may do in the future, but right now it doesn't seem to work. But finally, uh, MPS was asked to work with Park Mobile to integrate the data so customers can use either service. It appears that's going to be possible. However, the MPS app will have much more functionality than uh, Park Mobile. So we we have a contract. It's being reviewed by the legal department, but prior to bringing that up for consideration, we wanted to give the commissioners the opportunity to review the coverage map, which is attachment two and ask any questions about either the public engagement process itself or the MPS system in general.
Any questions for, uh, oh, wow, lots of questions. We'll start with Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, my question was about the the working with the Park Mobile piece of it. So I think that's great. I'm excited to have that. But since we've had problems in the past integrating Park Mobile into our system, I I worry a little bit about this, like, yeah, they think they can do it. Like, is this adding the layer of confusion that will cause people to be getting tickets unnecessarily? Or how is it going to work with the cameras? And all of that, I guess, is my concern.
It's a great question for Keith. You're muted.
You got unmuted.
About now.
Good.
Perfect.
Very good. I was actually, I had the same concerns initially because when you talk about different vendors, oftentimes they say, oh, yeah, we can integrate, but whether or not they actually would was a was entirely different story. So I actually had a conference call with MPS, their their design people and with Park Mobile, and everybody is on board. To what degree? We'll see, but they say they can integrate and say to what degree as far as a question mark. And the Park Mobile will not be able to provide as much features as MPS provides in their own. their own software. So I think what I envision is, uh, you still will be able to pay, uh, as you typically would through Park Mobile if that's your choice. But some of the added features, I think eventually people will probably migrate over to MPS.
And if you don't want to use either app, you can still pay via coin, credit card.
Correct.
Ever, your, your preferences.
Correct. If, if I can elaborate on that, one of the, the added features, especially in the, in the age of COVID, that MPS provides is this, is this concierge service. Where basically if you have a credit card associated with your account and you have the vehicle registered with the account, because this works off LPR, license plate reader technology, you can actually pull up to a meter, get out of your car and go do whatever business you need to do and never touch the meter, never touch your phone. Cause it'll track, it's, it's your, it gets your license plate information and it just charges you for the time used. That's kind of a nice feature.
Yeah, that's absolutely amazing. I mean, think about all the, you know, people right now during the pandemic, like the, the DoorDash and Grubhub drivers and all those folks. I mean, just being able to pull in, grab their food and if, you know, they get a grace period and they don't pay anything or if they're there 15 minutes, they pay a few nickels. You know what I mean? It makes it so much easier to facilitate, you know, sort of this evolving way of commerce or growing way of commerce. So that's, that's amazing. Any other questions? Commissioner Dubach? I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Dubach.
Thank you, Mayor. Not questions really, actually, comment. We, uh, because of this, because of some other work that I'm working on with Ms. Davids, I have recently had an overview of several community engagement initiatives that her department has, uh, run. We're familiar with the marijuana study, there was the stormwater study, there's this parking study. And behind the scenes, we, the city of Royal Oak is doing an extraordinary job of collecting relevant feedback around important projects. I mean, through my civic work and involvement with other organizations, I see community engagement processes or the lack thereof in other cities and we are blowing it out of the water. So my hats off to Ms. Davids and, and Mr. Brake and, and the work that they do because it, it does make a difference. And I'll respond to, uh, something that was said in public, uh, comment earlier today. Someone said, um, they're, they only had feedback from 1,500 people. I am here to tell you that feedback from 1,500 people in a city of 60,000 is extraordinary. Staticians will tell you that, uh, with a truly random survey, you can take 300 opinions and accurately predict the opinions of people across the country. So 1,500 points of touch with our citizens is, that makes me completely confident in the outcomes and in the results that we're seeing, uh, from that work. So, um, bravo.
With a student T distribution, you can get away with 36 in a lot of studies as well. For all you stat nerds out there. Um, Commissioner Dubach?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I was, I was actually gonna give, you know, kudos, uh, to the chief and to the team for the, I was getting random positive feedback about the, uh, the parking conversation that we had hosted from folks that never talked to me about city stuff on a regular basis, who had been or participated and felt like it was really engaging and meaningful. So I'm really confident in the direction we're going. I know that in, in previous conversations, Chief, you know, we've talked about, uh, the parking system. Uh, I think we agree, you know, in general, people want to be compliant. When we get those complaints, when people are having a hard time, it's because they feel like the system is, is set up to, to get them. And, you know, as if it's some sort of money grab and, and I think we've made clear, like, our, our goal is their goal. People want to be compliant and we want to help them be compliant. So what I'm, what I'm understanding from you about the system is that, it basically gives people a multitude of options to be compliant. It makes it easier for them to avoid getting a ticket. Is that your assessment and is that the reaction that you feel like you're getting in these conversations?
That's, that's 100% accurate and what we did in, um, the surveys, you can always, if you stay too long, you can shore up before you leave. And, um, so there's a lot of opportunities for that. Except if you stay longer than two hours. And we really kind of hit that home in the presentation. If you're gonna be there longer than two hours, go in the structure. The first two hours are free. It's 75 cents after that. It's a great deal and the people who use the structures love the structures. So, um, we need the street, uh, spaces to really turn over. We can't have people sitting in there. And really, when you look at how much it costs, even if you got the ticket and didn't pay anything, for some people, that's worth it, worth it to park there all day, but that really hurts what we're trying to do downtown and roll those spaces over. So, yeah, I, we, we think it's, it's, it's just really a, a good system and, um, they, they really shouldn't be, there's really no excuse not to pay, I guess.
Well, I guess, I mean, you know, the last, the last bit is on us just to make sure that we're informing people aggressively about these options. You know, we've talked before about, um, the ability on our printed ticket envelopes of making sure that, you know, has information about, you know, avoid a ticket, these are the options. Also pay right now, is that, are we planning on that kind of communication being on the envelopes if someone gets a ticket?
Well, it's gonna get mailed to their.
Digital.
It, it's getting mailed to them, so there won't be anything left on their car.
Right.
Sorry, go ahead. Point out though, in, in the first presentation, we didn't think MPS were able to do the angled parking. If you look on attachment two, those are all red. We'll be able to, they'll be able to do those parking spots, but they can't ticket them. So when a, but it'll be really targeted enforcement. So if someone pulls in and doesn't pay, our enforcement officers will be notified, hey, there's some violators here. And instead of just randomly walking around the streets looking for violations, they'll be really directed. So, um, you know, you know, that, for those people, they'll get an envelope, but, um, and then they'll have, there's a some meters that MPS will not, um, right now, they're not willing to take over. And, uh, if you go up Main Street, just north of University, all those meters, uh, on the street will be our, our old, civic smart meters. And then there's a couple in the outlying areas. We, we really are pretty comfortable that once we get the data used in the smart meters, that MPS very well may end up, picking those up. And then the last spot is just that little kind of center street between fourth and fifth along the tracks. They can't put their infrastructure in there, so those will be meters, uh, the, the old civic smart meters.
Gotcha. Well, I'd say if, you know, if this engagement opportunity that we created here is any indication of the effort that we're gonna be putting in to any of the rollout of any new system, you know, I think we're very much on the right track. So thank you for all the work that you put into that. Um, and hopefully we'll get some decent coverage on this conversation. So that folks know we're trying to build a system that is as painless for, as possible for everybody. So folks can, can, you know, be here in the city and enjoy themselves and not have to worry about, uh, getting a ticket.
Uh, Commissioner, just to that end, we, we're really looking at, what we roll out is, this isn't a negative thing, this is a positive thing. It, it's really, we think we'll get some good coverage on it because the people who have taken the time to learn about it, love it, they think it's fair. And so, uh, that, that's our plan, so.
Thanks, Chief. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, Chief and Ms. Davids, I mean, I'm just gonna echo everyone else, that what a great engagement session. I actually watched the recording of it. Um, I, I couldn't do it live, but, um, you had so many people participating in such a topic as parking, which is, you know, boring and tall to some, but like, just really important to so many of us. And, uh, you know, you look at this engagement, 77% of the people who responded like what they see in this system, which is just, you know, astronomical, because once again, we're talking about parking. So, you know, thank you for getting this information out there. Um, it's, I really appreciate it. Just a, a handful of questions. One thing I really like about the system is the ability of the bollard. It's red when you come back if you're deficient in the amount of, you know, time that you've paid versus what, what you might owe now. And you have the ability at that point, if I recall correctly, you can pay 50 cents at that point to bring you up to the next hour and then you will not get a ticket. So I, I, I think that's very exciting to, you know, give people the chance to take care of that right there and then without an issue. Chief, will that be the same in the head end spaces also on Washington? Is there a way to rectify, is, some sort of mechanism for that?
Well, probably not after they've gotten a ticket. If someone pulls in, just doesn't pay, no, I mean, it, but, so no, I would say probably not. Keith, is that, that's accurate, correct?
I think that those bollards that will be there at those are actually sensors and I think they do have lights on them. So I think a similar thing would occur where you would have a red light.
But there's a paper ticket issued already.
If there's a ticket issued already, no, the ticket's issued. Yeah. But I think, but I think if you were to approach, if you were to pull up and you walk away from your vehicle, after the grace period has expired, it's gonna turn to a red light. And, but I think the difference is you're gonna have a parking enforcement officer that's gonna make his way over there.
Okay. Oh, well, so, you know, I, just once again, you know, there's, it's, it's a nice benefit, especially for those, uh, back in bargain. Um, and Chief, thank you for taking our heart, our, you know, we talked about this in October. Um, and we talked about the parking lots and how we really want like one unified system across the, the city. And I know lots, surface lots at the time were excluded from the system and it looks like you're including them now. Looks like maybe P8 might be excluded.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, and just P8, just because that's OCC's lot and we're gonna lose it, so.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have the old smart meters there until they take it back over, so.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, with the, the meters that they're not upgrading at, at the moment, you know, the handful in the downtown and in other areas, can the civic, uh, meters integrate with the MPS app so people can pay through that app as opposed to the Park Mobile app?
Yes.
So we have a new one-stop app that's gonna work in all these great new upgraded, uh, um, meters and the old dumb meters across town.
Correct.
I mean, that's perfect. I, we see people, I, I think that's one of the big gripes you hear is, uh, Park Mobile is just not always the best app for people. So I love that we have this new app that's working even if it's not an MPS, uh, meter. So thank you for, uh, bringing that to us.
And, and just to clarify, all the remaining street meters will be smart meters, just the MPS ones are smarter meters. So we won't have any of the dumb meters left. So, um, they'll still have the credit card function and that kind of thing in those, in all the remaining street meters.
One more question on that. When you mentioned the license plate recognition for the account, um, I think that's really, really slick. Is that also gonna be available in the surface lots as well? So if you.
Yep, yep.
That's, that to me is, I mean, that's a no-brainer for someone. If you come to downtown once, twice, seven times a week, I mean, I would get that feature for sure every day. I mean, I would, to me, imagine you never have to, you just get out of your car, do your business, get back in your car and you charge for what you, what you use. No, no, no worry about getting a ticket.
And, and we're looking at, I, I don't know if it's gonna work out, but we're working on, um, with MPS. There was an idea presented by a resident that you could have gift cards unique to the parking. If you could buy somebody $10 worth of parking that they could then download to their account. And so we're hoping that's gonna work out. We think it will, but that's, so that could be a feature, like, you know, as like a giveaway or something like that for whoever wanted to do it, so.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions? Anything more to update? Now I'll just echo what everyone said about, you know, the community engagement. Not that, not that you couldn't have done a good job by yourself, Chief, but I imagine with Keith and Judy, especially Judy, you did an amazing job. And, uh, you know, like Commissioner Douglas said, I think this has always been a priority for us to get, you know, sincere, scientific, you know, information back from the public to help us make decisions. This is a perfect example of where we needed input. We got input and it's very helpful input, so, um, appreciate all the work. Ms. Davids, you do a remarkable job.
So, uh, Mayor, it seems like, uh, I'm sensing we, we've getting some positive feedback here. We could potentially have the contract ready to go by early as the next city commission meeting. Hopefully Anne's still on the call because it's, you know, uh, it's gonna be her work to, to get that resolved. And then, uh, that would really put us in a good position to, uh, have this system up and running, uh, before Henry Ford gets online. So, which was kind of our goal, so that's, you know, we're, we're tracking very well, but that's what we're looking at.
Do anybody have any, um, you know, objections to them bringing forward at least a preliminary or first draft or final contract in front of us, uh, by the next meeting? I mean, I think just in the contract, you know, um, I'll, I'll be looking for a few things just to, you know, performance, you know, on MPS, you know, what the exit clauses are, if something goes awry, you know what I mean? I, I don't love being married to somebody new, um, you know, if, uh, if some things, you know, uh, there's some challenges. So I want it to be an equitable, you know, contract, um, but, and understand their business model. But at the same time, you know, if there's issues that really tie our hands down to do things down the road, we just gotta look out for those, you know. I don't think it'll be an issue for them, but I just don't, you know, sometimes these things are one-sided and we just have to work, you know, go through them a little bit. But I, it's gonna be anything.
I would admit, Mayor, that Keith has been working with them and, uh, the original contract and the contract you're gonna see is, they're, they're not even close. He's really kind of tried to anticipate all those issues, um, to, to protect the city's end on this, and I think he's done a great job with that. And MPS has been very understanding when we explain what we're trying to do, so, so far, so good.
Thank you, Keith. All right. Well, good. Good, good work.
Thanks.
Well, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our friends, family and neighbors in this amazing community, we'll probably entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move.
Move to adjourn. Is there a second? Commissioner Macy? Moves to, or seconds the motion to adjourn. Any discussion on this complicated motion? All right, with none, I'll, uh, call for the vote. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Colo.
No banter.
She's shaking her head, no. How do you vote, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Yes? All right, Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, colleagues, for, uh, your spirited conversations and debates tonight. Thank you, staff, for all the prep work that you do. Thank you, Chief, it was good seeing your face tonight. Appreciate everyone's efforts and thank you to everyone who took time to watch and call in and remain civically engaged. We really do appreciate your feedback. So, um, everyone have a good night, stay safe and get vaccinated, uh, when it's your turn. Take care. Bye.